I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District to order on Wednesday, June 18th at 6:30 PM. Please stand with me and pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
Here.
Vice President Hurd?
Here.
President Duncan?
Here.
Director Fleischer?
Here.
Director Kellogg?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent calendar. Is there any items that the directors which have removed from the consent agenda? I'd like to discuss item D. D, okay. Any others? Okay, I entertain a motion for A, B, and C.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exclusion of item D as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, although in favor, say. There's no resolutions? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Passes five oh. Okay, let's do D.
I was just wondering if that would be a couple of minutes to talk about getting more on it. It's on iPad 39, where it's at. I have just a couple of questions on it. It's a $500,000 loan that we know that Jim has been working on to look at the B reservoir. Now, what I was wondering, is this going to be a design where we can build it, go forbid and build it, or is it just something that they're going to be saying we should do for the half a billion dollars?
That isn't for some...
$1 million is expected to give us a design.
Design and build.
Ready to go out to bid.
Ready to go out to bid.
But see, this isn't approving the, that.
No, no, no.
This is approving... Approving paying off a loan, yeah.
Yeah, pay off the loan.
That's all.
Which I have no problem with, except I had a question here. You're going to take cash out of, we got this $251,000 that we thought that they'd pay off. I remember looking at the budget and talking about it anyway. And then we're going to be taking the rest of the money, which is almost $200,000, $250,000, whatever it happens to be, and, well, we still owe $526,000, so $251,000 from that would leave quite a chunk of money. Is that going to really bother us with our cash deposits at the oil bank?
No, no. We have plenty of cash to push us through, but that's going, basically what it's doing is pushing money from what's going to be next year's budget, which will happen in the next month, to this year's budget. So all it is, is it's cash that will be going out in later that we're going to use now to pay it off, and that payoff is not only going to help us secure the financing that we're needing to do, but it's also going to save the district some money.
All worded there. I'm just wondering. Now, where do we get this loan, which it looks like we're going to be able to get, five years and zero interest, which is fantastic, we're able to do that. Are we going to wait and pay it off for the deal? Are we going to put $100,000 a year to pay it off by then?
The loan, the loan is a, is a loan that you get reimbursed for cost, but you're not obligated to pay, start paying back the loan until the project is complete, meaning the design project is complete. We then are able to then, be able to construct and finance it before that, then the design loan can then be rolled into the construction loan, which then, again, the construction loan would not be, meaning to be starting to pay off until the construction is complete.
Right. But that would be that our construction loan would be a half a million dollars higher?
Than what the construction is, that's correct.
That's all the questions I have, I just wanted to hear.
Why do we need to replace the B reservoir?
I'll cover that. The B reservoir is an in-ground liner with a floating top, and as well as us, the Department of Health Services see those as a health risk, and that's why it was elevated to the point that it could be funded. So we replaced the liner and the cover probably seven years ago, something like that. We expected only to get about 10 years' life out of it, stretch it maybe to 12 before we started having problems. But this was something that was in our strategic business plan from the beginning. We didn't have the funds or the desire to build it, or the time to build it as a permanent tank initially. That's why we did that first replacement of the bottom liner and the top floating liner.
How much is the estimate for replacing it with a permanent?
We're looking at about a $5 million project, plus or minus.
And where are we going to get the funds for?
As we always do, we get that from rates.
Yeah.
And we'll talk about it.
We have a pending $11 million thing, $10 million, and then this is a $5 million on top of it. Is it really something that we have to do right away? It says, you said, there's a judgment decision on how that tank is wearing. Is it showing age and showing that it's going to be failing in the near future?
I'll let Bill respond to that.
Well, it definitely shows age. In the near future, if we wait too long, we'll be spending money replacing the cover again.
And how much would it cost to replace the cover?
Man, I don't remember how much that cost last time around.
It was a million dollars, probably. It would be at least a million, million and a half on that.
And when we replace the cover, what kind, we would expect another 10 years' life?
The big problem is, is you have all your nice drinking water that sits underneath this big giant floating cover. And so whenever rain falls and everything gets on top of this cover and everything, all the other debris, until the pumps catch up and pump that water off, you now have dirty water sitting on top of your clean water that's separated by one little layer of membrane. And so we've had a problem before where kids get out there and they like the Barbie and new stuff, and they now go poke holes in there and you have dirty water in your clean water.
I thought we put security around that tank so where the kids wouldn't be a problem.
I think we're discussing something.
Problem is definitely less.
Right, I know.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's identified not only as a contamination risk by the Health Department, but it's also identified as a safety risk.
Right. Okay, we're not approving the replacement of the reservoir tonight.
Just getting information.
I know, but it's not on the agenda.
It isn't?
Nope, not replacing B.
No, the action, the action to gather financing will be later on, probably next agenda. We'll have the action for gathering financing for the design.
Yeah, it says committing you to the loan.
Right now, I think this is just a good business decision, even if we weren't getting a loan.
You're talking, paying off the loan.
Yeah. I think this is going to save the district money, and it's, we have deposits right now that are earning real interest.
I believe we approved passing item B.
Oh, I considered it D. D, yeah, D. I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes five oh. Okay, next item on the agenda is public participation. This one, I'm getting hard to hear, read this one. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board. You got that up there for me? In my operation, my eyes have failed me.
Can we put a little more light on, a little more light help for you, turn?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
It's not big enough. Make it big.
Make it bigger for you.
Good, okay, that'll help. Okay, individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda, although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed in, by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda?
Senator first.
You can be first, last, whatever.
Sorry, I missed a couple of previous meetings, and somebody will keep time because I could easily go over five minutes. So I apologize for my absence before. I was away doing some research, some of which was at the request of somebody who was curious about defeating the town's proposition to change four lanes to two on Skyway. The research I provided to the town showed that this is not a popular idea in Northern California and affects safety significantly. That being said, let me go on to some of the other things. The garden club would like to thank George Barber specifically for his attendance and participation at the Waterwise Garden Expo. He was one of our exhibitors, was popular, and at our closing meeting on Monday of this week, several people commented that he was the most professional, he was thorough, he answered questions, and he had accurate information. Frankly, if all of our vendors had done that, we would have had a wonderful expo. As it was, the weather was hot, there was a lot of things on our agenda that we couldn't address, the speaker series went very well. Next year, we'll be back to a garden too, and we're not doing another expo. At the previous town council meeting, they did pass a gray water resolution into the municipal codes of the town of Paradise. However, they specified that it was for clothes washers only, and that to apply for a permit would cost you $97. Now, the council members that I'd previously spoken with thought, if we could do this for like $9.95, one of them said $25, it's kind of like an incentive for people to come to the town, get the permit, and do it. But at $97, most of the people in the audience, including me, sort of poo-pooed the idea, gray water systems will go in without anybody applying for a permit. That's pretty much a done deal there. However, there was some information about it provided there, and of course Stan McKetchin was present again and had dozens of handouts, of which he gave away quite a few. So there is some interest in that. How am I doing time-wise? Thank you. All right, I want to give a personal testimony. I love the Aqua Hawk. I'm one of those guys that ought to be in your newsletter. Last year, I was watering every third day and averaging 1,300 gallons each time my sprinkler system came on. That's a lot of water. I didn't think it was so much, and what, did I pay four or five bucks for that? It's pretty cheap water in this town. But looking at it this year, same irrigation system, only a couple minor changes in my sprinkler heads, I still, no rainbirds, but still little overhead stuff, I'm averaging 550 gallons once a week. Now, go ahead and calculate the savings. I'm way more than the 20%, but I'm looking at my plants and I'm seeing very little deterioration in some of my plants, and a couple of them that are struggling, I didn't like them last year anyway, and my wife said, just pull them out. So that's fine, and you know what? I think almost anybody could do that. The Aqua Hawk thing, to go back and look and see now, can make a huge difference. Lastly, I am really disappointed we're canceling, canceling the workshop, but I got an idea. How about if we have all the same speakers get together, we get it videotaped, and we put it on the PID website and say, guess what? The workshop is free. Log in, watch these speakers tell you how to water your flowers, your trees, your lawn, et cetera. He's got an excellent program, we already have the speakers, I think we could do that, we could do it right here, we could have this, we could have PowerPoints, we could get the message out to people without having formally show up here and have them call and not register in time, et cetera, and I'm just making that as a suggestion. Thanks for your time. Did I stay within five minutes?
Four minutes.
Yep. Thank you, Ward.
Luckily, you talk fast. Okay, is anyone else who'd like to speak to something that isn't on the agenda? Seeing none, we will go on to the next item, old business, which we have none, new business. Regional, regional water, regional water quality control board. Questions and answers regarding the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. I won't even give you the letters, permit. Information item only. Who's going to present this?
I'll get it started.
Okay.
We have asked the regional board to come up so that you, as a board, could hear directly from them kind of why we're interested in this project and how they operate, basically. And if I have it right, I have Jeremy Pagan?
Yes.
Nope. Oh, Stacy. Sorry. Stacy Gotham's here to help answer some questions. So we have a couple that we have to kind of get things kick-started, so if you would mind going up to the podium, we'd appreciate it. So our first question, you want to introduce yourself?
I'll introduce myself. So my name is Stacy Gotham. I work for the Central Valley Water Board. I work out of the Redding office, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. There's nine regional boards in the state of California, and the Central Valley being the largest, so there's three offices, one in Redding, one in Sacramento, one in Fresno. I'm a water resource control engineer, I'm leading the MPDS unit, so this is the unit that actually is issuing the permit that we're here to discuss today. And I'm here to answer questions, and it sounds like there's some kickstart questions that you have that maybe will get things rolling.
Okay. Our first one is, if you could help the public and our board understand how the water board sets discharge limits for constituents such as dichlorobromomethane and aluminum, that it's kind of our areas of concern right now.
Okay. So we set limits in our permit, let me first clear up to you, just for everybody here, this is the MPDS permit. What we're regulating here in our permit is the waste discharge from the filter backwash at the water treatment plant, okay? So this has nothing to do with the treatment of water for supply. This is the backwash, when they, the backwash filters, and currently the district discharges that filter backwash to a surface water, and that's why they have an MPDS permit with our agency, okay? We're not the agency involved with the drinking water distribution. When we renew a permit, we, basically we set limits by, we first assess what the beneficial uses of the receiving water are, and in this case, the receiving water is Magali Reservoir, and so it's been, has designated beneficial uses, and the most pertinent to this conversation is that the waterway has obviously been designated MUN, municipal, for drinking water, and also for aquatic life. There's plenty of other beneficial uses that have been assigned. However, specific to today's conversation, the parameters that we're talking about have human health criteria associated with them and aquatic life criteria associated with them. So I'll take dichlorobromomethane first. Dichlorobromomethane has criteria rooted in human health protection, and you guys are probably aware that there's, I'll back up. So to set a limit, we look at all the criteria. For each of these parameters, there's multiple criteria. We take a look at the beneficial uses, and we pick the most stringent criteria. And so in the case of dichlorobromomethane, what's controlling the situation is the California Toxics Rule has set criteria for human health protection, in the case for dichlorobromomethane, it's this .56 value, it's very low. And in our conversations with the district, they were asking some questions about how that relates to the primary MCL and secondary MCLs, your drinking water standards, that value being 80 compared to this .56. And the 80 is actually for TTHM, total trihalomethanes, and DCBM is one of the four constituents that make up that criteria of 80. However, that is an MCL, and that limit of 80 takes, it's a health-based criteria value, but it also takes, takes into consideration technology and economics. So it is less stringent than, let's say, a pure human health protection, you know, criteria that is rooted in the California Toxics Rule. It's the one in a 1 million risk factor, okay? So in the case of DCBM, and I'm going to move forward to just aluminum if there's any questions, because I can go on and on about criteria, but, so in this case, oh, go ahead.
Has the criteria changed? Has it gotten more stringent?
No.
From 10 years ago to five, five years ago?
What has changed that maybe the district is feeling, although this change was in 2000, was the adoption of the California Toxics Rule, which promulgated this criteria into, so we are required to subject, or this is our criteria, and that happened in 2000, and this criteria has been around since then, and the district or dischargers or facilities have been subject to this criteria. So this is a common, this parameter is both wastewater treatment plants and water treatment plants. Anybody that has, is using chlorine for disinfection is dealing with this situation of dichlorobromomethane. It's one of the reasons why many water treatment plants have moved towards recycling their backwash into their intake. The difference, though, when we're talking about these two parameters, so what I just finished talking about was DCBM, that's the acronym we use, it's easier to say than dichlorobromomethane, is really rooted in human health protection. And the other parameter, aluminum, has both an MCL, you know, associated with human, you know, human health protection, but it also has criteria that is set for aquatic life protection. So it's different in this case, you know, comparing it to your DCBM situation. So once again, the district asked about the aluminum MCL, which is 200, and they said, well, what's this, you know, the 87 is what the facility is subject to. The 87 is actually for aquatic life protection, and we are implementing that criteria because once again, Magali Reservoir has a beneficial use of aquatic life. So that criteria is not new either, and it's also not a CTR criteria, so there's a big, there is a difference there. So I'm going to stop there and see if there's any questions.
What is CTR?
California Toxics Rule. So in 2000, we adopted, we promulgated the California Toxics Rule, and that's what, there's 126, what it did is identified 126 priority pollutants that the state of California was required to set criteria for or on. The criteria, the values actually already existed in the federal code, you know, under the federal requirements, but California then adopted them, and aluminum is not one of them, but DCBM is.
But you, you're saying you haven't changed these requirements since the year 2000?
The requirement to set a limit on priority pollutants, the 126, there's always been, there's narrative standards in our basin plan and numeric, so we have a narrative objective in our basin plan that says, you know, no toxics in toxics amounts, or chemicals constituents must, you know, meet criteria. We didn't have, we didn't have, those 126 priority pollutants didn't have the criteria that we were forced or, you know, had to set. We would always put the narrative in our permit saying, oh, you know, you can't have any toxics in toxics, toxics amounts, but what the CTR did is it identified these 126 priority pollutants. So true, so yes, in 2000, the district has been subject to, or the state has been subject to this criteria, so in that, in that sense, that is when they first started seeing this.
I've been told that your stringencies are greater than what is on the drinking water that we buy in the plastic bottle.
Yeah. I was, and I was, I want to make sure I get this right, and so today I actually, you know, I researched into it, because I'm not public health, I don't regulate drinking water, I regulate discharges to our surface waters and to groundwater. And so I looked into, so I want to get this right, so I'm actually going to quote it right from our resources, because I knew this, you guys would ask this, so, and I don't want to get it wrong. Okay, so what we're talking about, what Mr. Duncan is talking about, is that, and I'll use the example for dichlorobromomethane. So here we have this, the CTR criteria, and it's rooted for human health protection, and it was based, it's based on studies, and it's based on a one in 1 million risk factor for cancer. So it's very stringent. And whereas the MCLs are not, they're less stringent because, or they may be less stringent because they are, you're allowed to take into consideration costs, and so it says that the one in 1 million risk level governs the selection of human health-based criteria to interpret our narrative toxicity objective, and the level of risk associated with, it's the level of risk associated with involuntary exposure to toxic chemicals in the environment. And what that means is, is by supplying water through your water supply system, what they've decided, or what this is getting at, is that to treat your drinking water supply with something more advanced than chlorine would be very costly. You know, the norm is to use chlorine as your disinfection process instead of some other more advanced technology that wouldn't result in high concentrations of trihalomethanes, the total TTHMs. But when you're discharging to a surface water, we don't take into account those economics. And specifically, I want to get to this one thing, in fact, and this is the other one I want to quote, "As for CTR criteria, under the Clean Water Act, enforceable water quality criteria do not have to be determined reasonable to achieve. They merely must protect the use of the water." So EPA just looks at what levels prevent significant human health impacts and detrimental effects on aquatic life, nothing more.
They don't care how much it costs, and so you do it, right?
There's other, there are, there are tools in the toolbox to try to get a larger limit, like dilution or water effects ratios, there are some options, but yeah, it's not the fact, you know, that doesn't, the factors that Department of Public Health uses, or the MCLs, the state of California, and developing MCLs, they are able, they're human, they're not only human-based, or actually, technology and economics get factored in, whereas the CTR does not.
So you said that most water districts are doing exactly what we're thinking about doing?
Yeah, that's what we hear. So over the last five to eight years, I'd say, as we, we renew our permits every five years, so your, every MPDS permit is a five-year term, and so as the districts or water treatment plants have been faced with these more, the stringent criteria being applicable to them, they've looked at their systems, and we hear, a lot of them are under compliance schedules similar to Paradise, and their compliance project is to try to recycle. And we have had that, like, I know Bella Vista Water District up in the Redding area turned to 100% recycle, Clear Creek Community Services Districts, and Shasta Lake City, I believe, is going to recycle, they're planning, I mean, that's their solution. Other facilities, maybe unlike yours, possibly, if they're discharging to a large water body, they might be looking at dilutions credits. Your situation, oh, go ahead.
How would it be diluted?
Well, you have, there's a, in our, we allow for a mixing zone study to be done. It involves modeling, it involves an actually infield dye test. What's tricky about your situation, from what I understand, what I've read in the permit, is that you discharge to the Magali Reservoir, so most people discharge to a river that's moving downstream, there's mixing going on because there's hydraulics helping the mixing. Most facilities have a diffuser, a multi-port diffuser, where their effluent or their waste, their treated waste is going through a multi-port diffuser, which once, once again, helps mix. In your situation, I hear or I know that your intake is actually in the same water body in which you're discharging to, they might not be near each other, but it might be a little tricky, it would be, it would be, especially since one of the mixing zones you want is a human health mixing zone, one of the first questions we ask, is there a water intake nearby? Because you can't have a mixing zone inside, you can't have, you can't have an intake in your mixing zone.
A couple more questions, a little, a couple more. As I understand it, our discharge into the lake, and I've read 2005 report and all that stuff, and that's where we're, probably, we discharge to Magali Reservoir, and it states that you could read into light exactly what someone in your position was thinking at the time. But as I understand it, we are significantly under your maximum requirement for eliminating aluminum and dichlorobromomethane.
Make sure I understand, are you saying that at this point, you're...
It dumps back into the lake.
It dumps back into the lake.
Yeah, well, we, you know, we're under, and I think, am I wrong on that, Jim?
By the way, so we haven't, we're not even close to achieving the final limits, you know, in the 2010 permit. We have interned this, and we are doing pretty well.
Yes, when we renewed the permit, we gave the district at the time, time to come into compliance, and when we do that, even though we've established these final limits that are stringent, we then gave interim limits, so in the meantime, we've given the district much larger limits that we know they can comply with, that's the whole point. And so they're, they're in compliance with those limits, but by all means, they should be, because else we wouldn't have been doing our, you know, job.
As I understand it, if we build this new plant, $10 million plant, or whatever, it's going to be that much money, maybe more, you'll still allow us only daily recycle 20% of...
Their permit is gone at that point, isn't it?
It's a different agency.
Yeah, their permit, their permit is gone.
We got two or three agencies that are...
So it's a different agency, you're correct. So if you, we get involved when there's a discharge to, a waste discharge to surface water, or a waste discharge to land, so in some six circumstances, ponds are maintained, I don't, I don't see that happening for this. If you do recycle, I'm sure it would be designed in such a manner that every place that you send your backwash water prior to it being used once again for, at your intake, or, you know, as your source water for your facility, would be, would be... be considered some kind of temporary holding facility. Obviously, it's like flushing through. So, we're not going to, it would be, it'd be very unlikely that we would want to regulate the potential discharge to groundwater of that product. I just, just kinda imagine, we're not doing that at the other water treatment plants. So...
The other question I have while, while I have you there, cause I've done a little work in the past with wastewater, you know, sewer water, okay. Yeah, both in Orville, and I've done some stuff in Chico out by, D M D rational. Are you, you're the monitoring people for that?
For wastewater?
Dumping it into the river.
And they go, if a wastewater treatment plan is discharging treated effluent to a river, yes?
No, okay, like, cause I understand it, on any given day, Chico dumps, for the lack of a better word, seven million gallons into the Sacramento River.
Of treated effluent?
Of treated effluent.
Yeah.
Of treated effluent, yeah. I had it, that's out there. But I understand that, in the same way that we're Orville, but they don't test for antibiotics or any of that type of material in the water.
Yeah, I think what you're alluding to is, the acronym is, C E, constituents of emerging concerns or pollutants of, basically, you're talking, I'm, are you talking about, like you said, antibiotics and pharmaceuticals?
Pharmaceuticals, whatever you wanna call. I do a lot of work with livestock and have, you know, and it's antibiotics and...
Yeah. So, currently, in our monitor, in our programs, we, in the, the M P D S realm for P O T Ws, or for any of my facilities, I'll speak on behalf of what we have coming out of our office. And no, we're not monitoring for those parameters. The, our agency's not, nor is, is the dischargers. And so, no, that's not happening.
If you discharge in Little Butte Creek below Magali Reservoir, do you have a live stream? How far down you have to, down Butte Creek before you give us more of an entry?
Well, first of all, there's, so I'm a, are you, okay, so first of all, about mixing zones?
And this is year-round stream?
Yes.
And it's a stream to get our order out of. And then it continues below Magali Reservoir, down to Butte Creek?
So, in the context of changing discharge locations, so that possibly you might have more dilution?
Changing it from Magali Reservoir to Little Butte Creek, how far down would you have to go in Little Butte Creek?
To, you're changing, you're proposing possibly to change the discharge location to get more dilution?
Let's hold right there for a second. Little Butte Creek does not flow year-round. The only discharge into it is what we release.
Yeah, C F S what we release. So, there's not a lot of water. And we have two, two constituents. So, correct me if I'm wrong, that may help with one, but not the other.
It's the only thing that keeps that creek.
First of all, you can't dominate your mixing zone. I don't know how large Little, Little Butte Creek is, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's not that big. You, yeah, you can't, you can't be bank to bank. Your mixing zone, you have to have, you have to allow for fish passage. So, in the case of an aquatic life criteria, we're gonna be looking to make sure there's some kind of zona passage for fish. And you, you can't dominate, the mixing zone can't dominate the water body. So, many of our facilities that discharge to smaller creeks do have that problem. And, you know, they, they try to mitigate it if they still wanna pursue.
And since we're the, we're the body of water that is releasing and keeping that river flowing during the summer months.
Oh, because it gets created by the discharge from Magali Reservoir?
Half C F S, exactly, that we release. Otherwise, that would not have any inflow.
It would be dominated, trust me.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, yeah, I was gonna say this, yeah. We can't even go down this path because we're the releasing, we're not releasing close to enough water, Ted.
We're not mixing with somebody else's water.
I did have an opportunity to look at some of your data, and I got some gyms here, the gym, how do I say? And if I remember correctly, your aluminum is still hovering around the two hundred range, three hundred. And so, which, you automatically have a problem with your M C L. And that's human health.
What's M C L?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's what the, it's what water systems are subject to, the maximum contaminant level. It's the public health. It's the drinking water standard.
It's metals, it's metals and water, right? Is that what it is?
Well, actually, it's, there, there are drinking water standards. It's the maximum contaminant level set by the public health agencies.
All things put together.
It's what D P H regulates you guys by. We happen to look at those goals or those limits to when we have a, a water body that's designated as municipal use. But many times, our criteria is more stringent, cause we're trying to protect fish and in addition to human, human health. So, once again, those M C Ls, take into account, in addition to just human health, they take, they factor in economics and technology. So, sometimes they end up being less, less, smaller, or less stringent than our criteria.
So, for clarification, right now, we're riding the fence of being compliant, but we are not within the standards that are really set. Back in two thousand, we're with, we're in the, within the standards you have given us.
Interim.
Interim standards, yes, which exceed the normal limit.
Yes.
That you would wanna see us at.
And, and just to finish what I was about to say about the aluminum, is that some people have tried to, the eighty-seven, which is the aquatic, that's your limiting factor right now, is this eighty-seven, not the two hundred, or, or the seven hundred and fifty. Those are the three numerics you'll hear about with aluminum. And they represent either aquatic life protection or human health. And I wanted, you know, most, I wanted to let you know that the eighty-seven might be overly stringent for this area. And there's studies you guys can do to maybe justify a higher value. But you're never gonna not be subject to the two hundred and, with your discharge. And if, even if the aquatic life criteria you were able to bump up higher, it, it's still, it's still gonna be a concern, this particular parameter.
And we can have a problem with that with turbidity, right? Is that what throws that off, or when we have a, an event, or some rain event, or something, isn't that what throws that off? Where we could...
The problem we have with recycling back to the headworks right now would be turbidity.
Turbidity, right? That's what I thought it was.
We have, we have bumped that limit for aluminum.
A couple of times. Yeah, okay.
Now, you, obviously, you wouldn't be subject to these particular limits that we're talking about on your filter backwash going back into your intake valve, your source water. You know, this is, this is our limits for going to a surface water body. This isn't the, the standard of the quality you have to reach for Department of Public Health purposes.
So, if we look at a wetlands alternative for filtering our water, then we are still gonna be subject to your permit.
If you're looking at a, a, an alternative that involves a continued discharge of surface water, then you will be subject to our criteria, if that's the, the question.
If, if, we have quite a creek that's raining out of Paradise. And occasionally, we have leaks. And we had a large one not too long ago. Now, that water goes into these creeks that eventually get into either the Sacramento or the, or the March.
That's treated water, though.
Are you, are you talking about water tanks, storage water, your stored water?
I know it's treated water. But is, does an M P D S permit have anything to do with live streams coming out of our watershed or off of our district when we have leaks? In other words, if we close the system and it breaks, and water goes into the streams or something, are we required to test that water, or anything about checking?
So, we do regulate, many water utility districts enroll in an, it's called a general M P D S permit. What the Paradise Irrigation District's water treatment plant has an individual permit. The permit's written just for this district, okay? Our agency also has general orders, where we try to lump in similar discharges into one permit, so that we can just enroll people in the order and not write individual orders. We, one, one example is what's called our low-threat permit, low-threat discharge. Many districts, water districts are enrolled in this general order for the purposes of when they have to do hydrant testing. And they flush their hydrants, and the hydrants have chlorinated water in them. If they have to do any kind of repairs on their tank and they're discharging. If there's any kind of discharge of surface water, then yes, typically, people do enroll in that permit. In fact, our agency's actually working on a general order specific to water districts, so that they don't have to go in the low-threat. They'd actually have one written just for irrigation or water districts. So, it can be more streamlined.
There is another permit that's thing you have to...
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you have, yeah. Most water districts do for their hydrant flushing, hydrant testing.
There's things, whenever I'm reporting every month.
The thing that bothers me is, we're being penalized because we might harm the fish. And if we didn't have the dam, the fish would be gone, because it would be dry during part of the year. This doesn't seem fair.
We also have people that trespass and catch the fish. And she, that's what you're talking about, when they eat the fish.
Let me go on to another question. You're aware that we're, we're working hard to try and come up with a solution to this issue. Can you give the board any information about the M P D S extension process?
Okay.
Cause we likely won't be completed with construction by the time our permit expires.
Okay. Okay, so the permit that the district's under right now is a two thousand and ten permit. This is the permit. That permit expires in two thousand and fifteen. I think it's May two thousand and fifteen. You, the district is also, when that permit was adopted, the district was also issued something called a time schedule order. It was an order, not a permit. It was an order to come into compliance, compliance with these limits. The order actually only takes care of the D C B M and the aluminum's inside the permit. But let's just, for simplicity, I'm gonna explain it this way. So, the district's under this order to come into compliance, and it was, the district was given five years. So, obviously, that expires at the same time the permit expires, cause it's all happened at the same time. There's a compliance schedule that had outlined tasks that the district needs to complete, and a final deadline, I believe it's May two thousand and fifteen, that they need to meet, the final limits. Now, what the district is talking about here is, the permit isn't necessarily gonna get extended. We're gonna renew the permit, okay? But what the district needs is more time to come into compliance. So, they need to, let's say, extend or get a new compliance order, time schedule order. They need to extend it. We don't usually give orders out for more than five years at a time, but we can't ever give more than ten years. So, if we renew or update or give you a new time schedule order, we would be on our second round of five years. And so, that's typically our limit. I'd have to look at all the, the regs, but it's important to just know that that, that's your second round.
But it's possible to get another five years?
It should be. It, I know for aluminum, it will be, cause it's a non, not, it's not a California Toxics Rule cri, particular, constituent. For the D C B M, I believe we could do another year, another five years. It's a C T R constituent. It's been out there since two thousand. But I believe, yeah, we'll be able to renew the time schedule order, or give you a new time schedule order. And the district has already engaged the water board with a letter outlining, outlining the justification for the, what they're referring to as an extension, but basically, it's, it's a justification to prove or, to ask for more time. And what we like to see is due diligence and activity. And I can tell that stuff is happening, so we like to see that. Looks like there's some reports. Looks like you guys are making some decisions. And I believe the district just plans to notify us once a decision's made, so that it shows there's progress, movement in a direction. We, we just want compliance, a lot of something.
So, what would it take to get this extension? Is it, it costs us more money, or?
Oh, no, no. It just takes, um, there's, we just asked for a list of, basically justification. Yeah, accomplishments. We look to see if you've been on compliance with your permit. And, and you, you have to show why you need more time. Many times, people need more time because they don't have the money. They have to apply for grants, or they need to do a rate change, or they, there's many reasons. I mean, you guys obviously, I would think, know. And so, we do, so, once it's presented to us, we're able to assess it. And that's, no, it doesn't cost anything more.
We don't, we can't say, well, we're gonna get another five years, so let's don't do anything about it.
No, in fact, actually, one of, one of the items is you have to demonstrate that what you're requesting is as short as practicable. And so, you have to demonstrate that this is the shortest timeframe that you can work under. And, and some, you know, so, take that consideration.
Well, we've had several agencies, as you referred, we have, right now, is working to help solve this problem with the best analysis we can, and different things including whatever. But, you know, we're also looking at a ten million dollar project plus. And that would double our debt, with the district is involved with.
And is that ten million dollars, it's a recycle?
Processed water recycle project.
But now, whatever we build, and I've made this statement, because we've had the opportunity, it passed time, and we're just getting ready, in fact, we just paid it off, the last one, the ninety-three, where we could've solved some of this problem, and for whatever reason, we didn't do it. And I'm talking with me, I say the district. And they all have a reason for not doing it, you know. But what I wanna try to do is come up with one that's going to last for a long time. But it looks like you're looking at a twenty-year life with one of these plants. Either it's gonna be wore out, or it's gonna be obsolete. You know, twenty years is a long time. So, we're, we're really diligently looking at that. I will go on the board in my second year. And we've really been trying to do a diligent job of, and George and other people, and our treatment lab people, to really solve the problem. And, and we wanna solve it this time. They actually started solving the thing in eighty-three. And then they had a chance in ninety-three again. We're just paying that one off. Didn't solve it. And apparently, with the technology that was available, they didn't do it. Well, personally, as the one director, I don't wanna make that mistake again, if we could possibly keep running. But we cannot break the bank either. But you gotta say, it's solved, right? Keep water through the pipes.
Well, that, that's probably really not her problem. Her problem is making sure that she monitors the, you know, the, the discharge.
That they would take that consideration.
Yeah, I know, and I, I made sure that, I, I talked to, we work closely with California Department of Public Health. So, I had an opportunity, I went downstairs, they're right below us. And I had the opportunity yesterday, I just asked a couple of questions. Cause once again, I don't, I don't represent public health, but I just wanted to understand their side, or what they see with these recycled water projects, recycle being recycled, recycling the backwash. And, and the costs. And like I said, I mentioned one of our facilities up there. And the dollar amounts of the projects just didn't come near to what it seems like you guys are faced with. So, you obviously must have some constraints, you know, constraints here that make the project, it's pretty, that expensive. So, I would possibly, I mean, I would recommend that you guys reach out or talk to your Department of Public Health contacts, so that maybe, because they see these projects all the time, and how people are doing it, you know, increasing the settling time, if that's, if it's a turbidity issue. But I, you know, this dollar tag is very large. I'm, you know, pretty, didn't, you know, it's a big dollar amount.
And most of those other solutions that are cheaper have lots of land and flatter land. And that's, you know, our terrain and our location is really what's making this a challenge. You talked earlier about ponds that might not need to be lined. But our ponds are up on a hillside. We know they leak, so we can't, we can't look you in the eye and say, we're not gonna discharge, when we know it runs right out.
Yeah.
And, and ends up there.
Just for final clarification, though, if we, if, and when we get an extension on the order, it is five years. There's no...
No, it's not. I can't guarantee that it's five years. We'll get...
Well, but I mean, would be the max.
Yes.
Five years would be the maximum that we would get.
The max, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
You're hoping we'll get it done less, right?
Of course. But, I mean, we don't, we don't want to go too short and then have to rewrite another order. I mean, you know, do give you a two-year...
And we don't, and we don't complete our project.
...funding issues. And so, we try to write the orders such that, there's an incentive, obviously, a push, a carrot, to get it done. However, we also don't wanna make the compliance schedule so strict that if you happen not to get a response from a funding source, like a grant, that throws your whole schedule off.
But so that we all understand, five years would be the max. Five years, just so everybody understands, five years would be the max. There's not gonna be anything beyond that. That's if we get five years. That makes the full five years.
Yeah, it'd be kind, because your aluminum, you got the ten, you got the five, it's a non-C T R. So, that was the first time you were subject to that. And, and so then you would be, it would be the next, you'd get another ten. And I would want to talk to our lawyer to see if there was any, you know, way to give more than, more than that. But I, for the purposes of tonight, I think that that should be your target, you know, realize that you're on your, you're going on to your second round of an order.
Correct me if, right now, you're not concerned, you are concerned, but you're really not concerned about aluminum. Aluminum is not the key factor.
Oh, no, I'm, no, I'm concerned with meeting limits, and whether or not you'd be able to meet the limits if you continue to stay in the river, or the, the surface water.
I've, I, I work a lot with pesticides. Yes. I finally came up this evening with an acronym for this dichloro...
DCBM.
...d...
CDM.
DCBM, I'll hit that down. You know it has a very short half-life, but I know you cannot dissipate it by blowing it up in the air with it like a sprinkler system. But that would dissipate it. In other words, if you, if we, if we dissipated it by putting it in a sprinkler system, which they do on different lagoons and all kinds of stuff, when you went back out to test it, you wouldn't find it, because it would not be there in that form. You, you understand what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I mean, what you're, you propose, or...
It's against the law to pass it through an end-of-the-air sprinkler system.
Like an aeration system?
I was, I was focused on a sprinkling system inside your plant. You're talking about outside the plant, oh, yeah. You can do what you guys want with your little space.
Basically, that's what it would take. Because it has, as I understand, and I've done more research on it, it may be an error, it has a pretty short half-life out here. And, but anyway. One other question, and I'll be held up, hold up if you have it. If we develop a plant that does not dump anything into service water at all, whether it's be agreed, any other, begin, that you're out of, your agency's out of the picture? Okay. Thank you very much.
Phil?
Well, I've been doing some on my own, or is it when you make a fountain or something, it has to be inside of the building? It couldn't be outside in the free air, is there, we're worried about getting them actually floating near a house or?
Okay, so aeration at a wastewater treatment plant is obviously a very common technology. So when you say fountain and you're talking about a facility, I immediately think aeration. And by all means, there's many wastewater treatment plants out there that have such a sprinkling system in a treatment pond. But what I'm gathering is you're talking about outside of the district's footprint in terms of their gated, you know, facility. You're talking to...
It would be inside our footprint.
Oh, and inside the footprint of the existing, everything we're talking about, regardless of what it is, it's gonna be inside the plant, the control, the pond, these...
But we're not talking about aeration now.
No, but I've, what I've discovered is that you can aerate if you have it inside a building. And that's all. It's in the regulations. Okay, that's something else to think about. That we're trying to come up with ideas to minimize the cost and still have less than probably one per...
Wouldn't wanna lose in that building.
Larry, can I ask some questions?
Yeah.
Hi Stacy, I'm Aston. Do all the nine regions have the same rules on these two constituents?
Yes, yes.
The...
I just make note, some of our regions only have, might only have discharge oceans. So, or basically, you have, there's different criteria if it's an ocean discharge versus inland surface water.
The, I'm trying to understand the timeline, but I think you said the toxic rule came out in 2000, and our permit seems to be running on five and zero cycles.
Yeah.
So...
And that's what I, I wanted, I wish I had looked at, the 2000 permit. Because, and that's, I wanna look into that to see whether or not the district was, maybe had a previous order. But the way that the 2005, or the, no, it didn't, yeah, it didn't, it doesn't read that way and... Oh, and probably what happened is, what hap, okay, that's what it is, is...
2005 we were testing for.
Yeah, so what happened was this came out, but nobody had the data, because nobody had been monitoring for these parameters. So what we did was, in those, around those 2000, 2001, 2002 permits, we started putting in the requirements to monitor for what we call the priority pollutants. Then what happened is, is we got the monitoring, and when we go to renew the permit, we do this assessment, it's called a reasonable potential analysis. And that's when we look at the data and determine, oh, they exceed the criteria, they have reasonable potential. If you have reasonable potential, we're required to set a limit. And so that's probably, now, that timing's making more sense.
So our 2000 permit probably hit before all of this came. So we started on monitoring in 2005, and then we got our limits put on in 2010.
2010, yeah. But I, it's still something I would want to double check, actually, because I underst, you know, it's obviously pertinent to you guys in terms of how much time you have. And it's, that is one piece that I neglected to get in going back. But the way this permit reads, it doesn't, 'cause usually we refer to any kind of previous order that the district has been under. It even sounds like Bill's saying we have, they haven't.
The...
I have a question for you. Can you definitively state that the, that the, there'll be no more stringent requirements in the future?
No, I can't.
I have a question for you, Dustin. What about that law where the state of California, if they tell the district that they tell local governments they have to do something, that they have to fund it?
Yeah.
Why don't we go get the state of California to pay for this $10 million fiasco?
Well, I was gonna ask questions along those lines. I'm not familiar with California Toxic Rule. Is that a port of calone requirement or something that came out of port of calone?
It's actually in the federal code, and I believe is it the state promulgated it as our criteria. And so it is, it's not in the port of calone, but it's our, it's promulgated criteria. And we are, that's our criteria, now the state's criteria for these 120 priority pollutants. And actually, that's what it is. So when this came out, everybody was given, this, now this all, now it's all coming together, is, it was, the deadline to come into compliance was May 2010. And this permit, that's, and this permit's a 2010 permit, so it was the first time. So we gave, the state of California, they had 10 years to come into compliance with this criteria. So it came out in 2000, there was a 10-year time period where everybody was given 10 years, a free 10 years. And then after, that's why you'll see so many, yeah. And so they lost protection after 2010, and that's why the DCBM, being a CTR constituent, lives outside in a time schedule order and not inside the permit. Whereas if you take a look at the permit, your aluminum interim limit actually lives inside the permit, because we're able to take care of it inside our permit, because it's a new limit to the district. They've never had that in that, so we can give you guys time. And it starts first with the five years, and then we can, we can renew it with another five. But the CTR, yeah, it came out in 2000, and everybody was given 10 years. And so after 10 years, we have, we can't, we can't allow for it in the permit, so we have to put dischargers under orders to come into compliance, and that's what is reflected here.
If I understand you correctly, the DCBM, it's a health concern?
Yes.
Is that for, because the water could end up going back into the treatment plant? Or is that for somebody swimming, gulping some water?
It's for, I believe, water consumption or fish consumption, you know, if, fish consumption of the fish that were, that was in the water, in the water body. And so, and it's this exposure risk, the one in one million exposure risk. And so it's not swimming. But that beneficial, there's a beneficial use for, I don't know if, actually, Magali reservoir, Fualal contact rec. Okay, so that, that happens to be a type of beneficial use, and if we haven't designated it, then you wouldn't be subject to swimming.
That, that's kinda what I'm getting to, is there enough flexibility in the rules to, if, if the concern is somebody swimming, gulping some raw water, having adverse health impact, then we could, we could prevent that, or we do prevent that. But that's, that's not...
The MUN, the municipal supply is designated as municipal supply, so we protect our surface waters based on the 10 to the 6 risk assessment.
Yeah, and that's, see, that's, that's the illogical thing, in my opinion, I don't mean to criticize you. We could dump the same water back into the treatment plant, and we have much easier standards to meet.
To supply is a choice, that people, people have a choice when they turn on their tap. They know that they're only being protected to the ADTHM, total trihalomethanes. It's a choice. It's, it's what the district, that is, it's a voluntary, when people, because they know what's been taken into consideration for water purer, supplying water, and using this technology of chlorine for disinfection rather than something way more expensive. Whereas protecting our surface waters, it's a, it's an involuntary risk, and, and that, we don't have to take into account the economics.
Are you through?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I'm just sitting here looking at the maps and doing, we, we don't, supposedly we don't let anybody, they don't, can't vote there. And if we put a fence around that thing and put up warning signs, because when the water, I'm gonna make this, but I was told when the water leaks out below the dam, this dam leaks, is that it's within the standards because of the turbidity. But if we didn't allow anybody in there, we literally built a fence, all the way around it, signed it, had a security thing with that, would it...
Well, that's contact rec, and we were talking about the beneficial use for municipal supply. So what we're trying to protect is that the water in our, in our, in the surface waters, when it's being used for municipal supply, that the water is not going to exceed this criteria, this .56 on your, in your intake, but in coming...
Okay, we have a, we did it for other reasons, but we have a bypass pipeline. If you look at that map just above Dustin, it's up at the top of the reservoir, actually, off the map, there's a small dam that converts the stream into a pipe that goes all the way down to the water treatment plant. Doesn't, no water goes in and out of the Magali reservoir. We did that because pumping costs charges and stuff coming out of the Magali reservoir. It's one of the most unsafe dams in the state. So if we pump just through that, we just receive water here.
The Magali reservoir, you, whatever water body you wanna discharge into, there's established beneficial uses. So in the case of Magali reservoir, it's, it's in our basin, you know, it's basin plan, there's a designated use, designated uses. People, you can try to de-designate your water body if it's justified, but that is just some, it's very rare. And you wanna de-designate it as municipal use, but it sounds like you use it for municipal use, so...
It's not the original occasionally use, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, but we, we couldn't say, well, now we can't use the reservoir.
Well, it's also part of our permit too, right? The water stored there is part of the permit.
A water, I don't think that's an option.
So then Stacy, you think this is a Clean Water Act, ultimately, the California Toxic Rule came out?
Yeah, the CTR, yeah. Whereas that's the one that you're, you're not seeing any kind of economic, or, you know, economics going into the criteria for as MCLs do.
So if we had, so then other states theoretically, that they're subject to the Clean Water Act, they would have the same?
There's a federal, there's the, so there's the National Toxic Rule, NTR, and the CTR, California's Toxic Rule. We actually just took the federal, and we have the exact same values. We didn't make them more stringent. So other states, I can't speak for other states, but either they're implementing the NTR, because you always have to at least meet the federal standards, or they've been, they do something like California where they create, they turn it into theirs and make it more stringent. But I'm not aware of any state that has, you know, more stringent.
Has, are you aware of any districts that have challenged this, the Toxic Rule, or these particular constituents, the levels that have been set?
No, I'm not. Of course, you know, talking to our legal counsel, that would be a better question, like at the state board, you know, but out of the writing office, no.
You could probably tell from the meeting, but one of the things we're struggling with is this is a incredibly expensive project for a community this size. So we're trying to brainstorm ways to solve this problem without spending $10 million or whatever it may be. So it sounds like maybe there's possibly an extension. Is there some kind of reconsideration or exception process that we could appeal to your board?
Reconsideration of the applicability of the limits? With, one, we always reassess after every five years, we look at the raw data. And if you actually are coming in below the criteria, you no longer have reasonable potential, so we wouldn't subject you to the limit, and there wouldn't be as frequent monitoring on that particular parameter during the next cycle. I know that's not really what you're asking. The, those values are applicable, the .56 for a DCBM, and with ammonia, they are applicable. And I'd say where you maybe would have some wiggle room would be the 87, because that criteria, the 87 on the aluminum, that criteria was developed in really low hardness situations. And it's shown that aluminum is less toxic at higher pH values. So you could embark on a site-specific study to show that the 87 is not applicable to your receiving water, let's say. But I was bringing up earlier about how you're still gonna be subject to this 200, and, and it's not really, I don't know anybody, nobody in the region has done. We've always given that option, because most water treatment plants have an issue with aluminum. So we educated our dischargers about that option, but nobody's chosen to go that direction.
And are we routinely over 200?
It seems like 200 is a good...
That's a good value. I think it's, I'd say your average maybe is around 300.
The average is above, average above 200.
Yeah, and that's where I saw, right away I looked to see if you were under 100, because some facilities appear to be in the 100 range. And that's when I start thinking, okay, well, maybe, let me look at their pH. But the fact that you're over 200 routinely, you're, you're still gonna be faced with the MCL value.
And Bill did do some dosage adjustment in our process to try and see if we could end up with less.
And we tried to end up spitting out harder.
Yeah, if we dosed less, we ended up with more in our discharge.
Yeah, let's all, let's all not forget that the district has embarked on what we call pollution prevention plans, where they have tried, when this was issued in 2010, for these parameters, they've tried to reduce the concentrations of these parameters. That's part of a compliance schedule. We first ask dischargers to look within and see if they're, if they're the cause of the pollutant, which in this case they are, the two, the two particular parameters that we're talking about. If there's anything they could, source control, source being, the district being the source, if there's anything they could do to reduce the concentrations.
Well, your last words would, would show that the district is making some significant tries to resolve this. Now, everything I know about this, I learned from a few guys back there, you know, that, and as I understand it, the aluminum is a byproduct of aluminum sulfate, which is put in for clarity of water. Is that correct?
The quagulant at the treatment plant, typically.
For the clarification of our, whatever you wanna say like that. Now, are we trying to make the water too clear? I'm fighting that in my swimming pool right now. Costs me about a thousand bucks to change it, ice and clear, you know. And I swim about three times a year, but anyway, go ahead.
I just...
Yeah, I drink water if you're...
They were, they were telling us a quagulant dosage of seven, eight, or nine parts per million. We're at one part per million of a quagulant. We have lowered our quagulant so low that, optimizing our operations, that most plants don't even, can't get there. So we've already done that in terms of optimizing the...
Yeah, but ours is the aluminum byproduct. In other words, aluminum sulfate, we just bought a bunch of it. Put that in there, you, you're using the smallest amount that you could use. And we're still getting our over 200 participant, recipients out of there. Now, you mentioned here, one in, one in 1 million or one in 15 million, what was it?
One in 1 million, 10 to the 6.
Now, I understand LD-50, so do you, I'm sure. It's pesticides, okay? Well, and I understand all the way down until it's almost like table salt. But anyway, that one in 1 million, is that one person out of a million's gonna be affected, or what, what is that? Or is that the odds or the chances?
That's the odds of, I believe, cancer, so...
Okay, so one in 1 mil, 1...
1 million risk.
People drinking it.
Yes.
Get it, okay. If I had a... Putting the relief for life on down there, I'm twenty or volunteer in the American Cancer Society this very weekend. What we're after is getting people who are worked days for anything, so I wonder if that's what it was.
Okay.
So with the, with the levels that you've established here, you're figuring one in, one out of a million could get cancer from it. Is that right?
This is, that's based on the tox, uh, toxicology test?
Yeah, the toxicity, everything is toxic, you know. The purest PID water in the world is toxic. And if some screwball gets out and Chico started, he could kill himself, because he did that with old cow or water, cow water, anyway. So with the levels that you have here, you're figuring one out, one person out of a million has a chance to get cancer?
It's the criteria that we implement.
Yeah, the criteria.
That we implement, that we, that's what we implement.
I'm going to spend forty hours this week trying to give more people more birth dates in this thing we call cancer. Anyway, it's got interesting.
Okay, anyone else have questions?
So if we acquired legislation that said, the regional board shall consider economic factors in determining NPDES permit terms, I'm asking you to speculate, do you think that your guys' concentration levels would be closer to what DPH requires?
Should, I, I shouldn't speculate, but I don't think that, you know, I, I wouldn't speculate, but I believe the questions you're asking have probably been asked before, and that it would be better to just refer to our legal counsel, counsel to counsel, really, because I'm not legal counsel. So I think the questions you're asking are, are definitely rooted in legal terms, and I just am not, that, that's not my specialty, and I would prefer that the district by all means can, we can put you in touch with our legal counsel for those kinds of conversations, and they can do a better job of explaining it.
You've, you've got an excellent job of explaining. Go ahead.
We'd better cut this off, come on.
This is an inform, this is an information-only item, so.
This is information only.
And you're getting into cancer.
It's, they have good information, though.
Right.
Public an opportunity, though.
What?
The public should have an opportunity.
That's what I was trying to get to. Get it off the board and let the public talk. Okay, so the board's done, right? Okay, now, anybody in the public have questions for our guest speaker?
I was, I was hoping so.
Thank you. I think I can pretty much keep this under five minutes. If we're a municipality of seven million people, seven million people, you spay mud, maybe, I don't know, seven people a year might get cancer. We got twenty-five thousand, in four years, that's a hundred thousand, in forty years, that's a million people. It ain't worth us to spend a penny on this. If the state wants us to do it, it should be state money. Otherwise, the people in this town, it's a foolish thing to do. You're not protecting anybody.
That's the whole point of the story, and thank you for it.
Anyone else?
Seeing none, we thank you for your information, and sorry that we got off onto cancer, because I thought we were dealing with, with the water.
That's all we're spending two million dollars for, really.
No, we're dealing, because I'm surprised that California isn't more stringent than federal. I'm a relief to hear that tonight, but it, but I think it's probably too stringent, but we can't do that unless you can go to Sacramento and change the law, which we, I don't have the ability to do so. Okay, well, thank you very much, and we'll go on to the next item.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation.
And I will, um, call...
Ask a lot of questions for me.
Oh, good, but I will also nonetheless, in terms of my one, I'm going to, you know, double check, and I'll talk with Jen, and if I need to clarify any of my one in a million risks in terms of the study, I will relay that to Jen.
Okay. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is water theft, consider civil compromise?
Yep, I'll take that one. We were, you may recall, like I said, and I'm all about this issue of water being taken from hydrant into a water truck, and we were contacted by the individual, Mr. Knutson's attorney, about if the district would consider a civil compromise, and that's a legal process that Dustin can explain if he wanted him to, but it was not something that I felt as the general manager, I should have, be the one to make that decision, or even accept any offer in those regards. So that is why it's on, on the agenda for tonight, and Mr. Knutson's here to speak on his behalf, so either you can let him speak, or if you want any clarification from Dustin, whatever your pleasure.
Your board wanted clarification?
Clarification first.
Okay.
What are, what are the criminal penalties that Mr. Knutson is facing?
I believe it's misdemeanor, is that right?
Correct.
It could, you know, remember our legal system, if it gets over a certain dollar amount, it becomes a felony potentially. Evidently, he's been charged with a misdemeanor. It can be reduced to an infraction, which is, you know, the equivalent of a traffic ticket type thing. So that's kind of the spectrum, infraction, misdemeanor.
Okay, so that's the name of it.
But no more than a misdemeanor.
But what are the penalties for a misdemeanor?
I, what is the, it depends on what the DA is asking for. I, I don't know the specific limits. I didn't see his.
Assistant DA said that he would take a civil compromise depending on what you guys decided, because of the situation, so.
Well, why don't you go ahead?
The reason I'm here, and the reason I'm here to speak with you guys, is because, first of all, I've been in paradise for generations. I understand how important PID water is, drinking water, I understand all that. I always lived in paradise. I bought a place down in Lower Neal, which I purchased in two thousand, and it was completely full brush, completely just terrible for fire hazard. I spent eight years cleaning that place and making that look like a park. My neighbors all around me needed help, whatever, I was there for them. When the oh-eight fire came from Chico, which was a distance away, burned us out, came through, took care of my property, my neighbors, which I ran my dozer next to their property, tried to prevent them from having any issues with their place, and most of them were retired, out of town, couldn't even get to their place. I was there, I took care of it, you know, it was important for me to do what I can, and they all looked at me to do that. And in all the fires we had last year, which was adjacent to my place, doesn't matter if it's a hundred feet away or a quarter mile away, it worries all of us right there that got burned out. And to lose everything and to go through that, I have no idea what that's like. I mean, I've saved things for my kids that I had my whole life. I don't have none of that no more. I didn't evacuate my place because I had defendable space. I helped everybody else evacuate theirs because they didn't have defendable space. And in doing that, I didn't move my pictures, I didn't move anything, I lost damn near everything. And when, last year, when fires were around us, I talked to a buddy of mine, I have my equipment, he had a water truck that, I said, I'd like, I'd like to use your water truck just in case of fire. These three, four months of summer were, it's very dangerous, no matter what. I'm still trying to clean my thirty acres up. It takes time, it's, it's a lot of time, effort, and money, and it's, it just takes time to make it nice again. And in doing so, you still get the weeds that come back every year, everything you cleaned, and it still can, can happen potentially to have a fire hazard. So in doing that, I didn't go through the right channels, I wasn't thinking properly. To have the water truck, I made sure it did not contaminate by putting a new hose on it, the pump is new, it dumps into the tank with an open valve, there's nothing even touches the tank. I thought I was doing the right thing, just did it the wrong way. And in doing so, that's why I'm here.
Is there any way we can sell him more?
Yeah, well, actually, technically, no, we, we do allow construction water, and for the most part, that I know of, we, we only sell it to people that are utilizing that water within our boundaries. That's what we, we try to get out of the people that get the meter and purchase water from us. That's their intent is for them to use it in our district.
Do we sell any water outside the district?
It, it may happen, but typically, that's not what we...
The reason I ask, Patrick actually is a neighbor of mine, and I see, he down at Dustin's track, he has a brick track on his farm. And these, your police officer, right?
I'm retired now.
You're retired now? He was a police officer, certainly understands the law, and he runs it. But he's been a good neighbor to people around keeping the fire hazard down, and so he spoke. And I would think, can we find him in some way and charge him for something wrong in that way?
What is the civil compromise?
It's monetary payment.
That's, that's what the compromise is.
Oh, okay. So if we come up with a monetary deal, and then because of his location in, in a fire situation, he did get totally burned out, I was fortunate, being within eyesight of his place and saw what happened, and got out of there and didn't lose my own, but just by a few feet. The, i- is there something we can do for like him being a volunteer? All your properties outside the district, isn't it fair?
A foot in the county, so you go through my game.
So the only way, besides having him paid for what he took, is can we work out something for fires or emergencies, just like we did, we don't get any money from the town, I understand, when they, the water, water.
If, if the board wants to make the decision to allow construction, water or fire water to be used outside of the district, that's, you put it up to the board, I, I don't have anything either way, that's fine with me.
We don't, don't we have, some people have permits that don't live in the district that get our water? Isn't there two or three of those people?
Under contract.
Annex, is that annexed? No. Properties or tenant or no?
They're on annex, but they're grandfathered in before Lapco.
There's two or three people that come up every year.
Yeah, it's a contract, but I think it's against Lapco, it's against California law now, to give services outside your district without their permission.
This, this is, this wouldn't be permanent service.
Right. This is a, this is a fill-up of a tanker.
That's the biggest issue, is everybody out there's on a well, power goes out, I mean, and I ran sprinklers, you know, big lines everywhere I can, for, you know, protect what I can, but that's, in a fire, I mean, even if it, you know, the ones that were over on Chaparral last week, now if I'd had a fire truck and I was home, or a water truck, I'd have done what I could, because that's who I am. And, you know, being right or wrong, that's just what's got me here.
Well, do we know how much water you probably bought? How many, how many tank?
Less than a gallon of water.
Why don't we go through the?
That doesn't make any difference.
I'd like to ask, what, what were the circumstances? Did you take the water during a fire?
No, there was no, no, there was not a fire that day.
And we don't know how many times you've taken water.
Correct.
We don't know how many years this has been going on, and the, the fact that people choose to go live in a desert, and then complain about not having water, is not our problem. The people who live in Washington and complain because they don't have any sun is not our problem. The value of the, of the property that you purchased, the thirty acres, was indicative of the fact that you didn't have water there. But people choose to live in those areas, it's like somebody who, who moves in and lives next to an airport and then complains because of all the jet noise going over. I don't have a lot of sympathy myself for somebody who chooses to live in an area and then wants us to be soft about it. I might have been different if you would have come to this board and asked in advance.
Sure.
But I'm not happy with the fact that we have a, the legal system involved, the district attorney's office is involved, and if we then, like, you know, we did this not too long ago with a guy who just trespassed on our property, and we all got a little soft on it, and we said, well, we won't, we won't pursue the charges then. He worked out some deal of trading off community service or something, I can't remember what it was. But this is us actually then, having our clients, our customers, pay for the theft of water. And if we let it go now, then the next time we call the police and say, hey, it looks like somebody's out there taking water out of our, out of our fire hydrant, are the police even going to bother to respond if we don't do anything about it? And, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just uncomfortable with the whole thing. I'm uncomfortable with you being here, because I don't, I mean, I feel badly for you, because I'm a softy, too. I know some people won't believe that.
I believe it.
Let me just clarify, why charges were pressed in the beginning. We're, we're a water district, we deliver drinking water, that's our primary goal and issue. So when somebody gets a water truck and wants to take water with a water truck, we inspect the truck to make sure it's safe, we, we...
Put a backflow on it.
...properly, and they actually have a backflow device that's connected to the hydrant before they're even connected. So we want to make sure they're doing it correctly and safely. The other reason, the benefit of requiring the backflow device, is that we've tried to educate our policemen and our firemen, that if you see somebody with a water truck that is connected directly to the hydrant, they're doing so without our permission. So number one, it could be water theft, and number two, we still are concerned with issues surrounded with nine eleven. A direct connection of a water truck to a hydrant has definitely been identified as one large concern of contaminating the water system. So by, by allowing this and letting it go, I want to just remind you of the message you're sending to our local police, to our DA who put in the effort. Our goal is to protect our water system, whether it was intervention or not, but we want to make sure that the next time a policeman or a citizen that hears about this, sees somebody connected to a hydrant without this big old device connected to it, they're going to let us know, so that we can respond appropriately. So that's why we're here, and that's why we proceed there.
Yeah. How much is the, it doesn't matter the amount of water, I don't think, but how much should the, the civil solution or compromise be in part response, if, if that's going to be made as an example of this, of steaming water? Is, is there any advice from you, Dustin? It says on this thing here, Dustin Cooper will explain at the meeting how this process works.
Sure. Well, I actually talked to the DA's office, and to the assistant DA that's handling this case. There's two concerns. One is, the district was shorted on some money, you know, the theft aspect. The bigger concern, in my opinion, is the public health issue. And we want to have our law enforcement officials, including the DA's office, take that very seriously. And so I called the DA to let him know, Mr. Knutson's attorney had contacted us, what's your thoughts on this civil compromise? And the assistant DA said, we'd oppose it. You're free to agree to whatever figure you agree to, but we would oppose it in court. So I talked to the assistant DA last week, I think it was Thursday or Friday, I don't know if you've talked to him since then, but that was what they told me at that time. So the, the way the process works is, we can agree, and maybe Mr. Knutson had a specific figure in mind that he was going to propose, but what, five thousand, ten thousand dollars, whatever the proposal would be, the court doesn't have to accept that, and the district attorney's office doesn't have to accept that. The, and in fact, the DA said, we wouldn't accept it, we'd oppose it, and we'd still pursue the prosecution, and then it'd be up for the judge to decide whether, decide the DA's office or the two parties.
What's, what's the maximum fine for a misdemeanor in this instance?
It's not that, restitution is not going to be that much. I, I don't know the exact figure, but...
You're talking fine or restitution?
Civil compromise is whatever you guys agree to. Fine as part of a misdemeanor is, it's restitution, it's not going to be that much.
If we did nothing, would the courts get some money from him to reimburse us for our loss?
Possibly, assuming, I mean, he's, he's got legal rights, he's going to presumably go to some kind of hearing, and if at the end of that hearing, the judge or the jury, whatever may be the case, decides against him, then there will be the misdemeanor penalties, whatever the penalties are associated with that. Likely, one element of that would be restitution, and it'd be, you know...
The reason I ask about that is, a few years ago, somebody broke a window in my shop on Skyway, and the guy was arrested and went to court and was found guilty, and they told me I was going to get restitution, and I never heard a peep from anybody. And I was just wondering if that happens all the time?
Yeah, I mean, I have clients that collect judgments all the time, burying amounts of money. Getting a judgment, one thing, is one thing, collecting on it is another.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking.
So, a quick question, no matter what we do on this, it's still going to go to court as far as the DA is concerned?
Court, I...
What assistant DA did you talk to?
Uh, his name starts with a C, Connor or Colton. Uh, his name starts with a C. Connor or Colton. I don't know. I, I have the name at my office if you want to have your, you or your attorney contact.
I would like my attorney to contact him because that was not the information that I understood.
So why is, what is your concern? What do you want, uh...
My problem is, is I have no record. It's the misdemeanor charge.
Right.
I didn't use my head. I'm a smart guy, but I was trying to do the right thing and did it the wrong way. I have two boys. I teach them to determine right and wrong and be smarter than me. I've had to explain this to them, why I'm here and what's going on with that. That's not an easy task to do. In doing the right thing, I did the wrong thing. And that's important to me to teach them.
So you just want to keep your record clear if you can?
You know, I, I'm not a bad person. I made a wrong judgment, but in doing so, I understand the concerns from it. And I've learned from it. I've been doing this for a year. It's costing me money I don't have for an attorney to go through this. And I'm smarter than that. I'm mad at myself about it.
I feel for you, but I don't, I, I feel also that we would send the wrong message to the police and to our constituents if we forgave you.
I understand.
I'm on the Latko board.
I believe there has to be some precautions. I understand that.
I'm on the Latko board and Chico is doing things illegally all the time and we're going after them. And they're maybe not the bad guy.
I understand. A misdemeanor charge for a petty theft, which is, is ridiculous, I think. I think I more than put in my time.
Or did you take?
There was less than a hundred gallons in there. Basically what I was doing was I was gonna be gone out of town for six days a week. And my neighbor, which lived, lived behind you, Matt, he's, he's disabled, but he's home. And I showed him, look, this is what I want you to do in case there was a fire. I hooked up the hose, showed him how everything worked, went to hook it up, they drove in. It was a hookup and, and I wasn't even planning on getting water. Was just showing him how everything goes, make sure this is on right. That's, I wasn't even getting water.
Where's the fire hydrant?
Two ounces up from, from my property.
On the drying rack?
Yes.
On the drying rack, yeah.
I believe the only reason the police were called is because he was observed once taking water.
That is, that is not true.
Once before or both? More than once?
That is not true.
Well, I don't know about more than once.
More than once, oh, okay. So he was turned in by a citizen?
Yes.
If, if we agreed to charging for the water or charging for trespass and so forth a certain amount of time, it goes up to the district attorney and the judge to decide whatever else will happen when it goes to court. So, as Eric was saying, we won't see any money from any other one.
Well, no, I don't, if we don't do anything, we still could get a judgment, right? Isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah, the DA's office, I mean, we could agree to some figure tonight. And the DA's office told me very explicitly that they would oppose the civil compromise and they would, uh...
So we could agree on a, on an amount, but if we, but they don't want us to do a civil compromise?
Yeah, and...
They would oppose that.
If I were in the DA's office, that's the equivalent of the district cutting my knees out from under me.
Right.
That, that would...
They're not gonna be very willing to come back and help us a second time.
What if we do have another situation where there's a water theft and there's a, a contaminant concern? Is the DA's office gonna really aggressively vigorously enforce that? I hope they would, but I don't know. If we got the same assistant DA and, and we, uh, I, I called him, I asked him what his opinion was and, and none of us, we, we go ahead and agree to something? I mean, so I just think it, it's, it's unfortunate all the way around. I...
Yeah, I, I feel for Mr. Knudsen. There's, there's no two ways about it. But I think the misdemeanor, letting it go through the process, even though you don't want a misdemeanor on your record, is probably gonna be less stringent than whatever dollar figure we could come up with to send a message that this can't happen, but I don't think there's a, we don't know how much water actually went. It's hard to determine that dollar amount.
I'll, I'll ask Dustin a question then. Since you communicated with the DA's office, we should take no action on this as far, we should return it to the DA? Is that what we should do? Because they, they would oppose the civil compromise. They would oppose it. So say like if you had a thousand dollars worth of water you wanted to pay for, they would oppose that.
If we said that we want to, to drop the civil...
If we said a thousand dollars, we'll be happy. They would oppose that, whatever the court.
Yeah, and the, the judge may or may, may accept our side, the compromise, or he may accept the DA's office. I mean, it would be left to a judge to decide.
But like, like we were saying, if you've been a past police officer, you certainly know what I'm talking about. And if we, say you're accused, you know...
That's not what I'm asking.
No, I know that, but if we did, the next time they see a guy stealing water out of a fire hydrant,
I completely understand.
They're gonna be very reluctant to do anything about that.
I completely understand.
With some of the businesses I've had, and if you, you know, if you don't hold the violator accountable, I can understand why the police, you know, and you, you had this problem with domestic violence, you know, they, they won't follow.
Sure.
So we're, you and I, you and us, not me, but you and us, and we empathize with you for tweeting a rock and hard spot for the gold.
I mean, and I completely understand that. And I, and I can see by the situation why this is here today. That I can understand, you know, okay, well, teach me then. Show me how to, what has to go to the tank. Put me as, as that person that learned and, and can teach other people, look, this isn't okay. And this is what you need to do and this is not, you know... I, I did not look at it like I was stealing water. I looked at it like I was protecting myself, property and life around me. I look at it now and I understand that, but in doing so, if I knew I needed a permit, I would have done that. That was the farthest thing from my mind. It wasn't stealing the water. It was protecting what I continue to protect with my neighbors.
You probably wouldn't have got a permit either, though.
What's that?
You probably wouldn't have got a permit because we don't allow it.
Yeah, I, but I, I didn't even think about that. That was not even... I do, but when power goes out and water goes out, you know, even a backup generator, you're done. And that's what happened in the fire. When smoke took care of the power and the backup generator, there was no water.
I, I still see people doing, along with George, and I'm glad that Angela here has backflower bidders and we all know. But anyway, on your truck, tank, whatever it is, you have an air gap.
Yes.
You do have an air gap. And the water that you were taking from us went through that air?
Yes. It's open by this far.
About that far?
Nothing went inside the tank that could come back out.
So you, you screwed the, your hose onto that and then it went up into the tank and you have an air gap above it?
Correct.
Well, that's a big help right there.
And that's what I explained to the officer to stop me. I, you know, we can't contaminate nothing, you know, what's wrong? You know, I'm not, this is what's going on and we didn't see eye to eye.
Water under the spring, thanks to a heat, a backflower better to be very sure than when you're dealing with potable water.
Sure.
But on how many times have you, if you just throw the hose in the tank, it's going out.
Yeah.
It's out of the valley, I think.
I, I entertain the motion.
Uh, hang on just a second. I, you have a specific proposal. I want to make sure you get a chance to give your full spiel.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if he says, I'll give you a million dollars, maybe that ought to be considered.
That ain't gonna happen. But, you know, like I said, I talked to my attorney Monday and this is what he told me the assistant DA would, talk to him about. And I still have a case that I'm working on five years ago as, when I was a cop. They want my help. Well, they don't want to give me any, any leeway. I think that's wrong. I'm not a criminal. I did something wrong, but I, you know, somebody died, you know? And I, trust me, I learned from it and my kids have learned from it. And everybody I've been in contact with, they know that ain't okay. A lot of people had no idea. What I mean, you're protecting your place. Can't do it. Didn't think about it that way. The law is out there for that, that, you know, I mean...
So what is your compromise? That's what Dustin wanted you to tell us.
I would like this to be, um, uh, penalty for the water. And like I said, I will take a class. I will, you know, figure out what I need to use so I can put that out to the public, to the people that are doing it. I'm, I'm running heavy equipment right now. We use a water truck all the time in Redding. There's never a backflow device on that. Maybe they don't know. I didn't know. And they've been doing it for a long time.
So what was your, so what's the compromise? Do you have one?
I don't. I left that entirely up to you guys and see what you, you guys wanted to do.
Okay, so he doesn't have one?
You don't have ten million dollars to give?
No, I don't.
Yeah, no, we, we have another project that we need to fund. I don't know, really? Okay.
Okay, I entertain a motion. What's the board's?
Pleasure. I already know what to move.
I, I do.
Okay, good. I thought you were a nice guy too.
I am a nice guy.
I know, I see you work.
Uh, I move that we don't take any action. We leave it to go through the district attorney's process that is currently underway.
I'll settle that.
Okay, moved in segment. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Okay.
Uh, I think that if there is a monetary level that raises this kind of a thing to a felony, once this hits the press, I think it's important for everybody that reads about this, they understand that we will not tolerate a potential for contamination by backflowing into a hydrant. That's incredibly serious. And I don't know how we can emphasize that anymore than by making it a huge dollar amount, a felony level. If they settle for less, that's different, but in the press, it should reflect, we take this very serious and it's worth a ton of money to us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Would you like a, okay, Lauren?
Um, Derek, you want me to walk over there?
Yeah, you better.
Thanks.
That way you lose a little weight, just like I did.
Well, I don't have to lose it, it's what you did.
Yeah.
The one thing I'd like to say is after this happened, I, I think I told some of the board, I might have talked to Dustin about it, but there's a, uh, there's a water truck that frequents the corner of, uh, Sterns and Pence Road and it says Cherokee on it. And they fill there and they have no backflow device. I didn't know nothing about this either till I, till I caught wind of this case and I started looking around. And you've got, you've got a truck from Cherokee that's doing, that's filling up there at the, at the corner there at the gas station. And it says, it says Cherokee on the water truck. It's a, you know, like a factory water truck. It's not a pickup with a box in the back, but... So I just thought I'd tell the board.
We're reaching what?
Our neighborhood. Yeah, Sterns and Pence, yeah, I live right there, so, uh, never seen that.
Is the volunteer, Cherokee volunteer fire truck?
Still wouldn't fill out of our hydrants. Doesn't matter what it says on the truck.
Yeah, there's a plug right here beside it.
Well, did you want to re, butt in?
Good. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, roll call please.
Wait. The motion is...
The motion is...
To let it go back to the DA's office?
Right, to not take any action and leave it to go through the DA process that is currently underway.
Okay, thank you.
Director Corolla?
Yes.
Director Hough?
Yes.
Director Fletcher?
Oh, hey. Yes.
Director Kellol?
Always a good neighbor, Bill.
President Hooker?
Yes, I...
We can't, we can't make exceptions to good neighbors, even though he is a good neighbor.
Well, Larry, I did one of your things.
Okay. Okay, passes four one. I'm sorry, uh, you'll have to go the way...
We do appreciate you being here.
Yeah, we thank, thank you for your honesty too.
I would imagine that the DA would ask us, or the court or somebody would ask us, whatever, monetary loss we have, I would think, would they?
But we...
It's, it's been part of the process.
It's been, it's already been documented.
We don't really know.
If it gets to that point, there will be some kind of trial, so there will likely be a district witness, I would imagine.
Right, okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is Paradise Lake boating fees. Manager Barber?
Yes, this is coming forward, uh, from the, uh, Paradise Lake Recreation Committee. And, uh, the citizen approached them about our change from, when you made your last rate change at the lake, we, the board made a decision that they reduced the fee for boating, both annual and daily. And they made the decision to include parking as part of that. The literature that goes out for fees says parking slash boating combo, but the board's action was to include parking for free. We also have a rule that allows for handicap, people with handicap placards do not have to pay for a parking pass. And, and, um, that's been a rule for, for some time now. Well, as a result of the change, those folks that were handicapped that also voted, um, on an annual basis ended up paying more than they had previously because they got parking for free, but they still bought a boating pass. So they made a request that the parking boating combo be reduced to reflect, uh, for handicap people to reflect their, um...
Boating fee.
Their boating fee. And the committee recommended that the, um, the parking boating combo be cut in half, which is, I believe essentially what I put in there, that, uh, you would reduce the handicap boating fee equal to the boating fee less than the parking fee. So you have, um, two options in front of you. But it was, it's pretty clear when I reviewed, uh, what the board's action were, was that your intent was that a boating pass would include parking for free. So, uh, now it's, now it's up to, up for your consideration and I'll, I'll answer any questions.
Larry, were you there with that?
No, I would, that was a meeting I missed.
I thought there was a meeting there.
Right, the, uh, my question, my question is how many handicap people boat?
Uh, we were probably only talking on an annual basis, maybe ten or twelve permits.
I'm surprised there are that many. I'm handicapped now and I'm sure not gonna go boating.
I wanted you to do the rowing.
You will be, you will be later though.
Do we have, do we have any public members that are the handicapped that, that use the, the lake here today?
Oh, we do? Okay, good. Can we hear from you?
Uh, good evening. Um, I don't really know what you want to hear from me. I, I thought I did my, uh, my speech the last time.
But it was at the committee. It was at the committee. See, now you're at the board that makes the decision.
Okay, my, uh, and, and who are you? My name is Pat Brosnan. I'm a resident of Megalia. I've been for about the last eight years. I'm a retired police officer from Livermore, uh, many years ago when I was younger.
Do you have a water truck?
No, I do not have a water truck. I do not have a water truck.
Good.
I do have a couple of kayaks. My, uh, my prior experience with, uh, handicap issues, uh, I also worked for Mobility Works in Chico and I deliver mobility vans, vans that are equipped for, uh, uh, wheelchairs. And so I work with them a couple of days a week. And through the years, there's never been a fee for handicap parking when you go up to register your boat until last year. So that was my issue. That, uh, everybody that I talked to, and I do have several other neighbors who are handicapped, that they do like to use the facilities up there. It's a great facility. I know how all of you work very hard to, uh, to keep it pristine. None of us have an issue with paying for the boat permit, but when you do have a legitimate handicap placard that has been signed by a doctor, uh, according to California Vehicle Code, there are several, um, there are several articles in the vehicle code pertaining to handicap parking and veterans parking that there should not be a fee for it. You're also allowed to park in certain areas without paying and that was my, uh, my issue. Certainly don't mind paying for the boat fee, but I think it was, uh, uh, rather illegal to be charging handicap people to pay for handicap parking. And again, we also do not have any, and I know, well, I don't know, but listening to you gentlemen in the committee meeting, I guess there's some proposals down the road when the money becomes available, that there will be some actual handicap parking and possibly handicap access bathrooms up at Paradise Lake. So that's it, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
We have, we have handicapped accessible bathrooms there now.
I think there's handicap issues on, on the other side, but not at the boat, not at the boat ramp.
Not the boat ramp, exactly.
Yeah, see, we just did a lot of, uh, we approved, uh, uh, some improvements at the lake and it started out at five thousand dollars. And then when ADA got involved, it went up to twenty thousand, almost twenty thousand. So we are trying to work for, you know, make it nice for the handicap people. And I, my comment about whether they boat or not, it was not meant to be derogatory. I just didn't think anyone did, but that's okay.
No, I have my, uh, I have my own personal issues. I was involved in a high-speed chase, crash, burn, took out a telephone pole. And, uh, I've had a lot of surgeries to my legs, ankles, and my only way of getting out of my... had a lot of surgeries to my legs, ankles, and my only way of getting out of my, my boat at Paradise Lake is that I just have to fall into the water and, you know, figure a way to get back up. So trying to find a nice place to park up there is very essential, not only to me, but a few of my friends that, that do use the lake all the time, who do have handicap parking, and I'm sure it's more than ten. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
That gave a very good presentation at the committee meeting. Larry is actually the chair of that, but he was, with the illness that he had. And, but I don't remember you saying anything about falling out of your boat into the water.
You don't say anything.
Yeah, 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 we never heard that.
People don't want to hear that.
No, I, I know, I know, but sometimes, in order to get back up onto the ramp, if I can really get going with a good head of steam, I end up on the ramp and fall out of my boat on the concrete.
Good.
But there have been occasions...
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's part of the story, we don't...
Pass this.
Well, since it's apparent that we may be inadvertently, in trying to reduce rates and make them more equitable for everybody, we might have infringed on the law.
No, no, we have not.
We have not?
No.
We have not, because if we do...
We don't charge for parking.
Parking is free if you buy a boat pass.
The parking is free, okay? And here's my point. Just because we provide free parking to handicap, that aspect alone has no relationship to item number two, which is we provide this discounted pricing on a boating combo parking ticket. That was a marketing decision made. The twen, just because somebody can't come back in and say, "Well, then, since you reduced their overall parking and boating pleasure, I already got free parking, so now you should really reduce my boating fee." And that's not right. We provide free parking for the handicap. End of story. What we had decided upon for the boat pass, and these things are cheap, we're talk, aren't we talking forty dollars a year?
Yes.
Okay, forty dollars a year. Yes, our year's only nine months longer, eight months, whatever it is, but forty dollars a year is not onerous. And the other thing that I'm not really happy about is that we have a person from Magalia who's coming in here and looking for the participants, the people who support the district, who pay the funds, who are customers, to provide them with a further discount. Not even one of our constituents. He could be from Chico, you know, it could be from Sacramento, could be from anywhere. Anybody can come to the lake, that's not the problem. But we should be listening to what our clients have to say and what is legal. Now that I've given the legal opinion, we can ask Justin, or Dustin, for the real legal opinion, but that's the way I feel about it.
I just wanted to tell the person who spoke, I didn't get your name.
I think it was Pat.
Pat, yeah. See, you may not realize it, but our water customers subsidize the lake already with paying, they get, we, we don't get enough money to pay for the lake, so there, so...
For the recreation.
We spend way more than we take in. Right. So therefore, the citizens of PID are actually subsidizing the fee right now, and so that's why we're concerned about giving them breaks rather than non-paying customers. I just wanted you to know that.
Non-water customers, sure.
Let's hear that legal opinion.
How'd I do?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I, I had an associate spend about fifteen minutes looking at this, so if, if you want a real legal opinion, I better do a little more than that.
We'd spend three hundred dollars to save forty?
Yeah. You know, and that's the reason why we didn't spend a lot of time on it.
Well, good, let's use Ken's legal opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know about that one.
It's worth what you pay for it.
But don't you agree that...
This legal, this legal minute with Ken?
In fifteen minutes.
There's an obligation to give free parking for metered parking.
For meter parking?
For meter parking.
Only, huh? Or not just, oh, okay.
I didn't find anything that said, um...
Now you're really stirring me up.
Yeah. You know, so, uh...
So we give the handicap...
What would the reduction be if we made the first motion? What's the reduction really monetarily? What, what are we talking?
Like a half, it's twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars. Okay, that's what we've...
But, well, how much did it cost for just boating before we merged these together?
I believe it was thirty-five dollars.
Okay, so now he's asking that it go beyond, below what it used to be before we merged these together and said, "We're going to give this free parking to the boaters."
Well, no, because they never would have paid for parking before. They only would have paid for boating, no?
The boating was thirty-five.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Now, what is...
No, the combination of the two was thirty-five.
No, it wasn't a combination.
No, there was no combination.
That's what you're...
Okay, so just boating alone was thirty-five?
Thirty-five for the year, yes.
And how much was parking for the year?
Uh, I believe it was fifteen, that...
So we were at fifty?
Yeah.
That fifteen, yeah, for just somebody going up there to park it.
It was twenty, annual parking, and a single boat, that was thirty dollars.
It was fifty bucks.
So I apologize.
So we gave a combo, like McDonald's, they got ten dollars off.
Well, it seems like, Dustin, what do you feel about the second one?
I think it's fine.
It's fine, okay. So I entertain a motion. What's the board's pleasure?
I move that we leave the rates as they are.
Read that, what, read that second motion.
I don't want to go with that second motion.
Yeah.
I'll go with that second motion.
Because is that, is that changing it, or is that leaving the rates the way they are?
It's reinforcing. It's reinforcing.
Reinforcing the rates.
Yep.
Okay. I move to reinforce that.
Make them, make that motion.
I move to find that all boating permits include parking privileges at no charge.
I'll second it. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Anybody from the audience? Lauren?
We got to get you to start doing some of the dirty work for me here.
Yeah.
Thank you. I criticize Mr. Hunt a lot, but I'd like to stand and say, attaboy, you make perfect sense on this one. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all those in...
Yeah, I'll get it up for him. Uh, I'd like to compliment George on the professional way that he handled this at the meeting, and going and taking a look at it, and Pat at the meeting, you mentioned that, and she thought George has done a very good job stating what we needed to do about this item of business, and I try to remember if I remember, Pat, you sit there.
Sure.
Yeah, so, congratulations to George on the way you handled it at the meeting.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five-oh. Okay. Presentation on the action of the State Water Resources Control Board.
I have a slide presentation, and I'm going to operate it from here so that I can point wherever you may need me to point, and you'll actually see that. Board.
And they get to see it up there.
Okay, you'll, what happened was, because of the drought situation in, in California, the State Water Resources Control Board took an action to curtail, and Dustin's going to correct me any time I say something wrong, to curtail all posted nineteen fourteen water rights to vergers. So that means from the date of their order, which was in the May, we could no longer, we can no longer until further notice divert water to storage. The only water we have available under our water rights until further notice at the current time is our pre-nineteen fourteen direct conversion right. That can only be taken when there's actually water coming into our system. So at this point in the summer, it's not that big of an issue, because we don't have a lot of inflow that actually capitalizes on, or done, probably, right about now, this time of year. So what I want to do is kind of walk you through this, and what it's going to impact PID, because on July first, they are going to have a hearing and consider curtailing pre-nineteen fourteen rights as well. And, and again, the impact isn't in July, and it isn't in June, and it isn't in August so much, but what our main concern is, is number one, they have no end date, they haven't explained how they're going to lift this curtailment in any way, shape, or form, and so as we go into the fall, if these things are held in place, our fall storms are subject to being released downstream of Magalia and Paradise, and not for our pleasure to use. So that, that's a big issue, because we really are relying on, when you made your decision about our drought impact, it was assuming that we were going to get some fall rain like we normally do.
And we could keep it.
And that we would keep it. And these orders are lining up to where we can't keep it. So we did a few different scenarios. This is the first, first scenario here, and you can see that we're starting this on June first, and the, the blue line is no curtailment. So that means we're, we're under our old rules before any action was taken. The, uh, the next one is storage curtailment, which is the action they already took, and that's squares with a red line, or actually on the black and white, it's just squares. And they're overtopping each other with the red, and that's because these fall storms come in, and, and they're not of a big impact if we can use them. And our water right is, is large enough that we can utilize all of that without any impact if we have a dry fall. And a dry fall was assuming only ten percent of the normal inflow that we get in the fall. So that's not real significant that we have a dry fall, but if they take the matched action on July first, that's the green line or the line with the triangles, and you can see that there's a pretty good difference between sixty-five, that's five hundred acre feet, five hundred and fifty acre feet, that we're not going to be able to utilize for our customers and have to allow to go downstream.
George?
Yes?
I'd like to ask a question right now. Uh, will that water go downstream by itself, or are we going to have to pump it up and over the dam?
Uh, we, we could release without pumping, but we would be forced to release it.
Okay. I was just wondering if we were going to have to pay to pump it up?
No, no, we have a way of releasing it under gravity.
Okay, now your green line starts Ju, July, June one.
Yes.
Shouldn't it start July one?
Yeah, it would adjust a little bit.
Okay, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure it was on the same page.
You're going to find that in all of them. You'll see the difference. So this, the next slide assumes a dry summer and a medium autumn or fall season. So that, that's pretty much average, um, average fall. And you can see, we start seeing some difference with the storage curtailment, which is the dashed line here, not much, but again, if they take our pre-fourteen, that's a considerable, now we've grown to a thousand acre feet difference.
George, this, that, you, you said that wrong. It's still just the ten percent, tenth percentile inflows, but there's something else that happens using, there's that twenty percent customer...
No, I think Neil missed that. That should have been a fifty on this one. For dry, I'm going off the top, dry summer and medium autumn. So if this got...
So it's not tenth, the tenth percent in, in, okay. That's what's wrong then.
So what we started adding here on these boxes is what type of reduction from our customers we would need to move that green line with the triangles up to the blue line with the diamonds. So instead of the twenty percent we're asking for right now, we should be asking our customers for a thirty-three percent reduction to end up in the same position prior to the actions of the board. Now we're going into a dry summer and a wet autumn, wet was eighty percentile fall, rainstorms. And again, I apologize, this, this was something that was, tried to move up here and we missed it. And so you can see that the difference grows because in a wet fall, we're going to actually start gaining stores that we're no longer allowed to gain. And the impact to our direct conversion right gets larger as you move forward, and I'll just move through these. But then we're, then what we did was we took the next step. And again, we're just having to make assumptions. And we're, we're assuming that these curtailments keep, um, we had to make some assumptions, and one of the assumptions is that the reason the curtailments would remain in the fall is to maintain flow for fall salmon and seal eddies. So as you work through here, you've got a ten percentile dry summer, a medium autumn, and then twenty fifteen inflows equalling what we saw in twenty thirteen, which was a dry year. And we're assuming that on December first, they're, they're dropping the curtailments, but then on June first of next year, they're going to bring them back into place. So you can see as we go into next year with a dry winter, we hit another drought, that's what, this is what we're really saying. We're looking at ending next year on a pretty, pretty bad note. And then if the dry conditions continue, um, throughout the process, yeah, the impact's not that big, because there's not enough wa, there's not much water coming into the system to lose. So these are, uh, this one's the Armageddon scenario. So this is, this is, uh, curtailments, uh, dry conditions, and they continue to curtail us, and they never pull them off. So in December, they don't stop them, they just keep them on through the whole winter, and that pretty much zeros us out if they don't have some type of lifting of them at all. Whether that's a reality or not, I don't know, but you're talking about fifty to seventy percent curtailments of our customers starting to even be able to get up to that.
Isn't there some health rules that they would be breaking?
At some point, yeah.
We, we'd be in court. We'd let that happen.
Yeah, we would be in court. So...
Well, tell them if we run out of water, the fish are going to die.
The fish are going to die.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any left to actually maintain our fish flow up to that point. So, uh, you know, there's a ton of assumptions in these. I mostly brought them to the board, so you can see that these actions that we're facing are very significant, and, um, and we need to be aware of them, we need to keep an eye on, and, um, we may have to recommend that the board take some further reductions of our customers to be able to maintain ourselves going forward. But that's not what tonight's discussion is, it's just kind of getting you, bringing you on, on board with what kind of impacts this could have.
Now, was this put on by Governor Brown, or the legislature, or sub-agency?
Agency.
What agency? Calport Water?
What do you explain?
State Water Resources Control Board.
State Water Resources.
Which the person from the regional board, that's a sub-entity of the State Water Resources Control.
We should have talked about this once, you were sure.
She wouldn't have talked about it.
So the, their curtailment concept is not foreign, right? First in time, first in right, there's a priority system with water rights. When there's a drought, when there's a shortage, you start curtailling in reverse order of priority. So the, the concept is okay, and what the technical folks tell me is, the post-nineteen fourteen curtailments were, the, the dryness of the streams and such, it was justified, and it was actually probably a little bit late. They could have probably justified it earlier than, than what they ultimately did. But what they're talking about doing on July first is curtail... But what they're talking about doing on July first is curtailling pre nineteen fourteen rights. And there's a, and possibly riparies. And there's a couple of problems, uh, quite significant problems that I see. Uh, one is, there isn't, there, there's an evidence problem. Pre nineteen fourteens, uh, nobody has told the State Water Resources Control Board the priority dates of pre nineteen fourteen water rights. So the state board doesn't have a neat little list that says, okay, these, this group of water rights is a nineteen ten priority, this group is a nineteen, eighteen ninety priority, we curtail the first group before the second group. So they don't have evidence to, to support a series of curtailments like that. Uh, the second problem is the process that they're proposing to use. Uh, they're proposing to use emergency rulemaking, and wasteful and unreasonable use. So remember, I, I think I've told the board about the emergency regulations on the Three Creeks, Deer Creek, Antelope Creek, and Mill Creek. They're proposing to use the same process. So the process in and of itself is objectionable. So the, uh, I have a number of clients that, that this issue is, uh, concerning to them. Uh, what I've recommended is that the, um, managers send a letter to the State Water Resources Control Board teeing up this issue. How, how are you gonna unravel the curtailments? Because if you let them linger into the fall, when we start receiving storms, hopefully, that has a potential impact on twenty fifteen water supplies.
Oh, yeah.
So that's the first step. We're gonna just tee up the issue and see what the state board has to say about. So...
Do we need to give permission to George to write that letter?
It's been written.
Oh, it's on...
I'll send a copy of it to you.
Okay. In other words, we're one of the agencies of several that you're representing this.
I would say, on the process issue, every water right holder in the state ought to find it objectionable, that they're gonna propose emergency rulemaking.
Right.
On the, uh, on the issue of how long, how do you unravel the curtailment? When does it come off? Um, that's an issue you need to, entities that have storage, primarily. Uh, because the way they, the way they implemented, implemented the curtailments is system-wide, right? They waited until it was so dry that the entire Bay Delta watershed justified the curtailments. In my opinion, they can't turn off the curtailments in the same manner. They can't wait until the entire, uh, Bay Delta watershed is all flush with water. Because if that's the case, we're very likely gonna have missed a lot of storms. Um, so I think they ought to turn off the curtailment in a very dynamic manner. That is, if our little watershed gets a good storm, they ought to turn off our watershed from the curtailment, whereas maybe, you know, the Uba watershed didn't get that same storm, for example. So they oughta kind of pick and choose on a, on a much more detailed basis.
Are we giving him that? Are we sending this in our letter?
Yes.
Stating that?
Keep in mind that if we get that storm, it hits our watershed, it's also hitting Middlebeet Creek, which is just to the north, kind of west of us. And that, Middlebeet Creek is, has no, no dams. It's completely, completely unimpaired. And the salmon and steelhead habitat in Littlebeet Creek is almost exclusively downstream of Middlebeet Creek. So for them to curtail us, we're not contributing a lot to what they're trying to protect, in my opinion.
Doesn't make sense.
That'll come out through our policy rules.
Right. Okay, any questions?
What did the poor salmon do in dry years and drought years when there were no governments around?
Kate's been picking up...
I'm the environmentalist dancer, my answer.
They probably stayed in the ocean. They were smart.
They went to Mexico.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Anyone from the public wishes to address this?
I'll pass.
Okay. Any other directors?
Oh, I can give you a story. Actually, there were years when the Sacramento River was dried up before the dam.
I remember, I remember when they, Sacramento flooded, too.
Yeah, oh, Valley flooded, and that was before the dam, too.
Well, that's interesting, so the, somehow the fish have found their way back, huh?
Right.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is Paradise. The ring? Oh, the ice rink, ice rink.
Unless, unless, uh, there's a...
Better recommendations.
Long thing on this, we should just make a motion to go ahead and participate in this like we did last year. Isn't there some choices, or something that we might want to change, or something? George?
Well...
Or who, or it was yours?
I'm on the committee.
Oh, the committee, okay.
This was, this was brought up in the community relations committee. Um, you know, they, they've got all kinds of sponsorship levels, but, uh, like last year, you know, we, we didn't really go for sponsorship. I don't, I don't believe, um, Bill, Bill and I were together there. Uh, I think we agreed on this, that we don't believe that we should be sponsoring, uh, other organizations or charitable organizations, Rotary, or the Lions, or things. That's not our business. But we do think it, it wise to, um, uh, take advantage of, of, uh, community relations visibility, and to, uh, to offer some support and pat on the back for what the Paradise Recreation Parks Districts has done over there. Uh, so we would, we would recommend what we did last year was, what are those called? A kickerboard or a sign in the interior of the, uh, of the ice rink? That would, you know, focus in without very many words, maybe cartoons or something, an easy message, but it's gonna be focusing in on probably our drought situation, to , uh, remind people that they're skating on Paradise Irrigation District water. And, and, uh...
But they're skating on thin ice.
On, they're skating on thin ice, that's right.
There'd be, there'd be a great slogan, huh? Right?
You know, it'll, it'll lend a little support to the, uh, ice rinks, uh, uh, situation there, but it's, it, it won't place us in one of these positions of a, you know, a ten thousand dollar sponsor, or, or one thousand dollar sponsor. Sponsorships are for charitable organizations and rich people, and it's not the district's position to be spending our clients' money like we were rich people.
Do, do we still have our board from last, from last year's?
That was brought up also.
I don't believe that's an option to give you any...
No, but I mean, we have that to be reused if we went for the same thing. Or they threw it in the trash?
Yeah, we don't know where it is.
I don't think they believe that, I don't believe they saved them because they had skates kicking on them.
They may have had holes in them, they, yeah, they might've gotten...
I believe they did, here.
So what did we do last year?
We want to recover our sign at the end of this year.
What did we do last year?
We didn't want board...
Four fifty?
Four fifty?
Four fifty, I think is what we spent. Was it four fifty, or did he change the rate? Four fifty is what we...
Four hundred.
But I think last year it was four fifty.
Maybe so.
Yeah. Uh... So, committee's recommendation?
The committee recommended that we, uh, we go with one board, it was one, wasn't it, Bill?
Yeah, the four hundred.
One board, four hundred dollars.
I was telling us we're right.
With the caveat that we get, uh, that we get our board back at the end of the season. Then we can throw it away if we want to.
Uh, we've talked to Mike, and they say it's gone.
I don't understand, we didn't...
I should've asked him yesterday when I asked him.
I saw it like, uh, two days before the thing shut down, and the board looked like it was pretty good condition, so. Most of the boards looked like they're in pretty good condition.
It's a sticker on the board, and so they tend to...
It's the wall?
They peel it off, and then when we buy a new one, put a brand new sticker on top of it, is what I would guess.
They create those by making a, a big machine that prints out gigantic...
On vinyl.
And since it was on wood, that may have been the case, and they may be reusing the kickerboards, repainting them, and then, but I don't know, we did not save it last year.
We can ask this year, that's all.
We can ask if we want to save it this year, and if it was in good shape, it would be something we could use at other events, if it's, or, you know, for display, if it says, you know, a state...
Yeah, we'll give them a new piece of plywood, if that's what they need, but, you know. Be nice to have our four hundred and fifty dollar sign back.
You designed it last year?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, uh, do a sponsorship for one board at the cost not to exceed four hundred dollars for the inside rink.
Yeah, well, do you...
With, 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 what? With, at the Paradise Ice Rink skating, is that what all?
That may not include the artwork. Does that include the production?
No, it's just, that's just the, but we can...
We're not talking about the production, we're talking about the sponsorship.
Okay.
Yeah. Any discussion from the audience? Board? All those in favor, say aye.
Just to clarify, does the board understand, our board understands why this board is on the agenda. It is a low dollar amount that certainly is within my authority to approve, but being that it's a, a community event, again, I wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with continuing this, and that's why I'm on the agenda.
And I wanted to make a comment, too, that it's the messaging we're looking for. It's not that we're saying, hey, good job here, we love ice rinks, it's an opportunity for us to get the message out, just as it would be if we were doing an advertisement in the news space or something else about that same bar.
It's a billboard. It's just, it's a billboard. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a five zero. Next item on the agenda?
This is gonna be me again.
Director access to consultants, Director Hunt.
Yes. Uh, we had a, an administrative and personnel meeting in May to talk about, largely about, uh, access to the attorney, because he's a pretty expensive guy. Um, but we just, you know, tried to cover all of the bases that we could, and thought about any potential areas where directors or, uh, may get involved with contractors outside, you know, non-employees. And so we broadened our horizon to this, uh, suggested change in the, uh, in the, uh, policy and procedures manual. And it will, uh, not prevent somebody from contacting and going to the attorney. Um, it will prevent the attorney, or any consultant, from responding to a board or director member unless the board or director member has the authorization of the entire board, or, in the attorney's opinion, there, uh, is, there's validity to the first few minutes of the conversation, uh, exigent circumstances, something that the attorney believes would be in the best interest of the district for the attorney to go ahead and hear a board member approaching him without going through the board for permission in the first place. So that's a little safety valve that we thought was prudent to have in there. And of course, this is not just for the attorney, but it would be for architects, or, or subcontracted engineering firms, or contractor firms, uh, the people who are washing the windows firms. Um, and that way, we let our management team control those, uh, those approved costs and expenses, and the board still has the power to move on, move forward with investigations if it believes it's appropriate. And if the attorney believes it's appropriate. That was the, it, it took from May until now because we came up with language, I do a great job in writing stuff, and then it gets, it gets changed. But, uh, we, we decided it would be best, uh, talking to staff, and we sent it in to the attorney for, for his opinion on it. And, uh, he wanted to make sure that it came back with something that's workable for the board now and in the future.
Okay, now, does this, by voting this in, what does that do to our old policy?
This is the old policy, it just replaces part of the language, puts that in.
And you can see the blue line now, oops, scratched out on the bottom, that was the old policy. So that would be eliminated.
I thought it was longer than that. I, I thought it had something to do with...
Thought it was proposed longer, and then the board shortened it.
Yeah, but we, I thought we had, the one I looked at it, when Bill did it, it said that, uh, you had to, you had to get permission from, you had to, you had to, you had to, uh, contact the president before you did it, and tell him you were gonna do it. Exactly what it said, that's exactly what it says.
That's what it said right there.
It does say that? I didn't, it doesn't look like it's that. Any director desiring access to legal counsel must advise, advise the board president or the general manager prior to contacting legal counsel, and a report will be given to the board of directors at the next scheduled meeting.
It just looked longer when I read it before. Okay, that is...
We can double-space it if you want. No, that's fine. Does anyone else have any questions? Directors?
Uh, I have just one. Number two, inquiry is initiated with the consent of the district's general manager. The general manager is an employee of the board, he has no authority over individual directors, and shouldn't have.
The gen, the district general manager has direct access to the attorney?
No, I'm saying that he has no authority over a director, because here it says, inquiry is initiated with the consent of the district's general manager.
That's right, so if a gener, if a board member, uh...
No, he can't be put over a boardman.
Yes, he can.
The board member...
All we have to do is vote it right now.
A board member doesn't have any authority...
Jeez.
Unless he's with three. But the manager has lots of authority.
Yeah, but he doesn't have it over an individual boardman.
I, I, I work for the majority of the board, I don't...
Not for an individual, exactly. He, over one, he does, he doesn't have over three.
No.
He doesn't, he doesn't. Okay, if you, if you really boil it down, that's why if you go back to the history of the PID and other organizations, board meetings, it becomes a volatile, because we're an entity all by ourselves. See, you as president, the only control you have is running the meeting, you can do a very good job, at that point, you can be, that's it.
Right.
You know, that's all of the authority you have. So I have to function as an individual representative of those people out there. That's my boss, not George. I'm George's boss. One of five bosses he had, been in that position myself. So these type of activities in our bio, in our rules and regulations, serve as my ability to really represent these people. That's my duty.
Well, well, but it's, okay, maybe that...
No, it does not represent those customers by coming to the board.
No, because if you, and if you did have some kind of issue, you'd be able to go to legal counsel, he would make a determination at that point, yes, this is something that we need to circumvent these rules.
The reason that I voted...
That's why it's in there.
And I don't remember who brought this up, or made the motion, but I know I voted for it now here, the ones that cross out. Any director desiring access to the legal counsel must advise the board president, not get permission, just advise. And if the board president is around, then he advises the district manager prior to doing this, and then he gives a report back at the next board or directors meeting. I have no problems that way whatsoever. But if it had language in it that said, I would have to ask the board president for permission, then I, I would never vote a yes on that.
Right, but this doesn't say that, since you have to ask the board.
No, no, it's...
The new one says you have to ask the board.
No, no, this is, this is a better way for me to function as a board member, the one that we're trying to cross out.
But you still have the option that if you felt it was something...
Only with the majority of the board...
No, down at the bottom.
Yes.
You see, I have no more power than any other of the four or five of us. You have no more, for three.
Three people.
We're all, we're all, yeah, we're all private entities. But now, three can pass something in here as long as it's not a change to this set of rules. Now, in this set of rules, if we vote on this, it takes a two-thirds majority, on here. And on a five-person committee, team of board, it's four each.
Why, why does that, it doesn't take a two-thirds majority.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Certainly does.
These are policies and procedures.
What you do, policies and procedures, you have to have a two-thirds majority.
Is that correct?
If it's a rule, of course.
We've never done it that way before.
The only way it would be if you, if you had another policy on that.
You do, and it's right under here, there.
No, no, another policy that said two-thirds, that's changing. Yeah, we don't have a, it's three.
But if you're following parliamentary rules, that's the way it has to be, when you change rules and regulations.
Those are not parliamentary.
No, you have to have a two-thirds majority.
I don't think we're...
We've never done it.
Let's just, let's just go to legal...
We're not doing it that way.
Then we, then we haven't done the proper...
Robert rules, well, I don't think we have, uh, we're not under any parliamentary procedures right now.
If you, if you weren't, then you wouldn't have to have a...
What parliamentary procedures are we under?
Yeah.
Just to make it, if, if we weren't under parliamentary procedures, you wouldn't have to move approval or adopt this revised policy change. Now, I, I love parliamentary procedures.
What parliamentary procedures?
It's how to run a meeting. How to run an organization.
No, we don't need a how-to book. We run the, we run the meetings here. We, we don't have to run according to Robert's rules and orders.
Okay, it doesn't say that we run... Robert's doesn't say that we run the Robert's Rules.
Okay.
You're gonna go ahead and talk about that anyhow. We don't have time for you to wander off on that stuff.
You, you have to, unless you wanna...
But wait a minute, George, are we under Robert's Rules of Orders?
No, our policy says that the board president may operate a meeting under Robert's rules, but it's, it's the board's president's prerogative to do that.
See, so we're not even under it.
It's only running a meeting, that's not adopting a policy.
So I'm just gonna cut to the chase here, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt Policy Chapter 2.25, Director Access to Consultants as Presented, with the changes.
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure, you can do that if you ask here, I'll give you permi, I mean, the board will give you permission, right?
Yeah. Questions are perfectly good.
What's the downside if a director does not follow the...
The downside, well, the onus is on me now, so if I accepted Director X's call, then I better not bill for it, or I'm, or any consultants violating the policy. That's, that's the fundamental change, rather than being directed at the board member, it's directed to the consultants.
Exactly.
So, now, I have an out, there, there are circumstances, and I, that I'll just call them sensitive issues, I think there are sensitive issues where if you comply with the, did you go back to the policy? If you comply with the one and two, you would frustrate the purpose of the policy, you, there may be a reason why you don't wanna take an issue to the board, or majority of the board, at least not in open session, and there may be an issue where if you take it to the general manager, it may not be appropriate. So that's why I suggested that if the paragraph started with notwithstanding, that's kind of a safety valve. If there's an issue that I think deserves my attention, and then, then I, I think that safety valve would, would allow me to address it. But if it's a run-of-the-mill, Dustin, what's the Brown Act say on whatever topic, then I would ask that director, did a majority of the board authorize that, or did the general manager authorize that? And if not, then I would then have to make a decision whether to end the call or just answer the question without billing for it.
In my work with the district, I call up government agencies and gather information. On Wetlands, I called the attorney that eventually ended up writing the Wetlands recommendation on my own, and eventually that became one that the board used. I didn't ask anybody's permission to do that.
Did he charge, did he charge you for it?
Were they consulting?
No.
Well, then if he didn't charge you for it, then it doesn't fall under the rule.
You can do anything you want, as long as they don't charge you for it.
As long as they're not our consultants.
Yeah.
And as long as they're not our consultants.
Well, as far as, in my own personal thing on this whole thing, it's just an attempt to give the general manager authority that he doesn't have, and to basically shut me up, so that I can't talk to legal counsel. It also shuts up the rest of me.
I, I have no problem in taking item, that paragraph two out.
Well, I'd like to see it taken out.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it, but what we're doing is...
Why is that?
Because sometimes you call and talk to the general manager, and it does slow, I think it would slow some business down, because a lot of times you have a question, and you say, you know what, that's a better answer by Dustin, give Dustin a call and, and get it taken care of. So I do think it would slow down some part of, of the flow of business.
Well, in instances like that, though, let us slow that down. The other thing is, the general manager could say, aye, or some, one of my staff will handle that, we'll get an answer for you.
Or I just attended a conference on that very topic, here's the answer.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's kind of a...
Yeah, I, I like it in there.
That's why it's there, because it may be what you think is a legal question, as an individual board member, but it's a question I know the answer to, straightforward, normal, special district or water district.
No, no, but this says that you would give a board member...
But, but if they saw it...
Yes, okay.
Then they can tell the board member, yeah, that's a good question, if you wanna hear the answer directly, you can call Dustin, I'll let him know you've come to call.
Okay.
Or I will say, I'm gonna call Dustin, get clarification, and I'll get back to you, what's your preference?
My preference is not to deal with you.
Well, I don't know, I don't, yeah, see...
Then we'll call him, Bill, just keep calling the attorney.
That kind of communication, I don't think is acceptable.
Certain issues, so I don't deal with you in them. It's not, this is not my policy, this came from the committee, I wasn't even in town when this...
I have, I personally have no problem with item number one or number two, because I have no problem with, working with George, and we worked out just recently on several different things, have no problem with that at all, but, and George is the first to admit this, we don't work for George, he works for us.
Okay, so what problem do we have?
So it's, so it's a yes vote?
Where's your problem?
The only thing is to make this pass, if you really wanna run an organization properly, now, let me finish, we went down to Sacramento, and they talked about this there, and what you got, to spin or modify a rule previously adopted requires a two-thirds vote, a majority, it does, out of the group. And what that does, that keeps a faction of an organization, whether it be a five-member board, or a bigger group, from running an organization improperly, that's basically what it does, because you have, you're not representing them, you're representing only by a simple majority.
That's a great, that's a great point to bring up. So let's vote on this issue, we'll get our three-two vote, and then we'll implement, because that's what we've always done.
Of course, you're assuming you're in your three-two vote.
Yeah. Well, it, it's probably gonna be three-two, one way or the other.
Doug said, Doug said it was, he was a yes there, he just said he had no problem with either one, so...
Would you like to say something?
I would, the legal counsel is here, so he understands the policy no matter which way you're talking. How would a consultant that you hired understand this policy? You gonna make him a copy?
These people, the consultant's not mentioned in here about taking a call.
I asked that of the George call, the consultants are gonna be formed this on their, we don't be formed members talking to this.
And I want, I think that any consultant that I currently work with, or had worked with, would not take a call from an individual board member without speaking to me beforehand any, because that gets them in the...
Hot water.
Hot water.
Well, I get consulting, but I promise not to charge you for it.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm a consultant in some areas, and I've worked with consultants, and I know you have too, board, and before I ever worked, one of our certain consultants, I would call George and say, I'd like to ask this guy a question very physically, and I'm sure George would say, do it, I'd be that proud if he did. In fact, I think it'd be an error if you didn't do it, but you could do it.
Well, unless he can answer the question for you, in which case we don't spend money, because we already pay him money.
Any more public want to speak?
I'm glad the press is here tonight. We're in labor negotiations now, and, and as we all know, this come about because one director, who I don't have to mention, who's immediately to my far right, talked to, talked to an attorney that the other, the other board member thought was frivolous, because he, they think that he wasted a couple thousand dollars. But, I'd like to say this, while you're limiting yourselves to the, to access to the attorney, you're talking about giving somebody who makes a hundred and seventy thousand dollars bonuses and stuff, so you're really not worried about the ratepayers' money at all, this is just, this is just mean-spirited against the, against a member who used the attorney, and anybody, anybody...
He's claiming...
If you're, if you're, if you're honest with yourself, and you poll the public, the public will, will say that's, they believe the way I believe. And so I urge the board not to vote this in, because it, it, it looks like exactly what it is. It's three members who just happen to be able to outvote the other two, and is gonna limit them, because they don't like the, the way they use their free speech. And, and, and each one of you work for us, and anytime, if I come to you, and I ask you a question, and you need to get legal opinion on it, I feel that you should be able to go to the attorney, or call him, or whatever, and get legal opinion, if it happens to cost five hundred bucks, so what, it's a lot less than five thousand dollar bonuses, and giving people three percent a year for forty-some people, it's a lot less than that, so we're really not talking about a lot of money, we're just talking about mean-spirited against some, some people who's ran up a couple dollars worth of bill for an attorney, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I have a comment about that. And if fifty individual public members were to contact this board, and us to have fifty individual contacts with our attorney, that took an hour each, was it fifteen thousand?
Have the, have the advocate, sorry.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is crap, it's the board's, it's the board's responsibility to control all of the expenses. We have one, one guy that's gone off the reservation here, won't follow policy, thumbs his nose at it, this is an attempt to bring that into control, but still, allow this board, the very few times that it would ever have to go forth, probably with a theft, sexual harassment, some, some malfeasance going on of, amongst the board members, or certain staff, that we would ever even have to contract, contact the attorney in the first place. Otherwise, it is easy, efficient, for us board members to work through the general manager to get information to and from the attorney.
And an individual board member would still have the ability to contact Dustin, Dustin make the determination, yes, this is a sensitive item, you didn't follow the procedure, but I'm gonna go ahead and answer your question, and pursue this, or whatever. So no one's limited to anything. But it is gonna have to require some common sense, because I think the last item that we had was basically a document that we could have printed out of our own computer here, that cost us about three hundred and seventy-five or three hundred bucks for Dustin to produce, because that document was something that was already here, was already policy. So to ask legal counsel to produce a piece of paper, that's an expensive piece of paper. I don't know what, six copies or seven, or how many copies we had that night, but if you broke it out, that was about, probably about, I don't know, fifteen bucks a copy for the amount of ones we, we printed. That's a pretty expensive piece of paper for something we already had here, and I think most of us already knew what it said on the piece of paper, so it's not limiting anybody. It's what we're doing is controlling spending that can't be controlled any other way.
If Dustin decided to answer that, though, he'd have to do a pro bono.
He'd do it on his, that's his decision. No, unless he thinks it's a, it's an actionable item.
I wanna make sure that's clear, if, if I take a board member's call, and I don't bill for it, I assume everybody's okay with that, right?
Yeah.
Because I'm reading the policy.
Yeah, we're okay with that, yeah.
No, I'm not, but go ahead.
Oh, God.
Well, if that's the will of the majority, then, then the policy should probably read, consultants of the district, including the district's general counsel, may not respond to inquiries of any board member that costs the district money, or something along those lines. Because I could see a situation in, in, the exceptions, the notwithstanding paragraph, those are gonna, I mean, hopefully we never see those, to begin with, so I don't think that really is ever gonna apply. But I can see situations where I get a call, and it's, for whatever reason, the call comes to me, and it, most of the time, they're very easy questions to answer, I know it off the top of my head, and I probably just won't bill for it, if that's okay with the board. Because if you want me to, to just absolutely not accept a call, or any other consultant, then I think the policy ought to make that clear. Make sense?
So I think, I think any consultant should not accept the call, except for general counsel, because of the relationship between the board and general counsel, if we have a problem, a serious problem, of malfeasance within the district. We aren't gonna have that problem with the guy who's out there making the rock wall, or putting up the steel building, or putting on the shingles.
But I think Dustin's looking for some comfort and guidance in the policy, so in the, into the notwithstanding, it should say, general counsel may, at their discretion, respond to an inquiry at no charge to the district.
He wants it right?
The way it says right now, he, at his discretion, he can respond to the inquiries of the board member, and charge the district.
Right. If it meets those, that narrow criteria.
That's right, and I have no problem with that. In fact, I think you should, because if it meets the, the need, you should be paid. And I would trust you not to be spending our money frivolously.
And that would not limit an individual board member.
Okay, Dustin, if I don't follow this new policy, which is probably what I don't do...
That's right, you've already, already said before, you don't have to follow policy, because it's just words.
Well, in this case, I'm not gonna be here forever, and some other person comes along, maybe out of school, or goes out and does things on his own. Every board, when I was on the cemetery board, and Larry was there with me, I went out and inspected the cemetery, walked around, talked to the employees, talked to customers, and a lot of changes came out of that, over time, good changes, and we built some things that I think we're both proud of having done there. That's the same thing I do here. I, two days ago, or yesterday, what was it, yesterday I walked around the yard, and I talked to Kevin about something else, and got some information, and I went out and looked around the yard to see how we're going, and how so forth is going on, I'm the only director on this board that does it, and I was only director on the cemetery board. That's just the way I function in my job, and I call up consultants and so forth, I'm sure, I've talked to consultants, as you'd want to call them, as they're working on the yard, or some other project, and ask them their opinion, and that's it. I'm very careful not to give anybody direction, tell them not even to pick up a shovel, or anything like that, because if I did that, I would actually be financially liable if I got hurt.
Except you give direction to the attorney and tell them to spend money.
I don't give direction to Dustin.
Yes, you have.
I ask information, just like I ask everything.
That was, you said, can you get this for me? That's giving direction, okay?
Um, yes.
Yes, that's giving direction, that's expending money, and that's what we're trying to stop, Bill, because you don't have any respect for the client's money. You spend it because you have a, you have a bone of contention, you wanna beat up on George all the time, it continues on even today, and it's your idea to get rid of it.
The point of asking is not to, is not to beat up on anybody, I, I don't know, if I say much more...
I call for the question.
I would like to make a motion that we draw...
We already have a motion.
We already have a motion.
I would like to amend the motion.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the motion, that number two be dropped, off of the motion.
I'll say that.
Okay, been moved and seconded?
I suggest we all vote no on that. Make it a five-o unanimous vote.
Okay, on the, on the amendment, you have it, Georgiana?
Yes, to draw number two.
Okay, on the amendment, a roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
No.
Director Henn?
No.
Do I get the vote twice?
No.
Director Corolla?
Yes.
It's Rules of Order.
Director Cala?
Yes.
President Duncan?
No. Because I, I believe in George, and he's, if he, if I didn't think he was a good manager, I'd be looking for another guy, and I think he's great.
Call for the question.
Okay, now, it didn't get amended, so now we're gonna vote on the, does anyone want the original motion read back?
Do we want to amend it for the part that...
Well, let me, let me...
He still gets paid if he decides that he needs to take the call.
But let me, let me ask the situation, if, if it's, if it doesn't fit within the exception, if it's not a sensitive issue, it's a Brown Act question, and I just decide to take the call and not charge for it, does, does any of the board have a concern about that?
And you decide not to charge for it?
Right. I'll take the call, and you'll see it on my bill, but it'll be no charge.
It's no charge, talk away.
That's basically what we're trying to do, is save money for the district.
Or refer him to his Brown Act manual.
And if it's a serious charge, where you need to get in and go to work, then charge us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let me, I have another little bit of concern, this is kind of a personal policy of mine, I like, if I give information or advice, answer a question to one board member, I kinda like it to be made available to other board members. So your, the policy, the old policy, I guess, is still the current one, it talked about a report being given.
So like, any calls?
I like that.
Any calls that you would receive, would report at the next meeting?
If I get a call, and I decided not to charge for it, but it's a Brown Act question, I, I think it ought to be reported.
In your legal report?
Yeah, or my legal report, or director report, or something like that. Yeah, or my legal report or director report or something like.
You would think the director should, oh.
You can just do it in your legal report.
So.
Yeah, but then he's gotta charge for it, doesn't he?
Yeah.
If you get a report on it, you're in charge for it, right?
Legal report, well, by time while I'm here.
Yeah, I know, he's already, are we not already paying him to sit here? So I mean, it's not like, do we have to pay you double time to actually talk? I, that's, I don't think that's the case.
If he leaves the report at the next meeting, it wouldn't cost us anything extra, right? Right, okay. Do you want something done to the motion or?
I think there's an understanding. If everybody's okay with that, that'll be my personal policy.
It's a good understanding. Okay, roll call please on the original motion.
Okay. Uh, Director Corolla?
Yes.
Director Head?
Yes, yes.
Nice try. Director Fleischer?
No, no. Not as hard as those votes.
Director Callow?
No.
President Duncan?
Yes. Oh, and it passes three two. Even though Robert's rules of orders, we don't go by them. And I'm according to our policy, the president can decide whether we're not, not going by them. And I decided we aren't.
Okay.
When you change the rules and policies.
A little recess before.
You need to look at that, because this is going completely against two hundred years of policy, how to change bylaws and policies.
We are rebels.
You have to have, uh, a notice of, a previous notice, which is in the agenda here, and then it needs a two-thirds of the majority. They just did this down at the town council.
Talk to George and route it to me.
If you would like to present that as a policy of the board, let me know.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
Okay.
At least review it.
Bring it to the administration commission.
What it does is, uh.
Committee.
That's where I would go.
Okay, now.
War committee?
Admin.
No, I'd be very happy to. No, we'd have three people. How would we do?
Yeah, you don't get to go. Just myself and Sepp. We'll handle it for you.
You said right. You don't trust.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I do trust you too.
Okay, now.
I'd give it due diligence.
I know that.
Okay, so number six is a closed session. Public employee performance.
I'd like to make a motion.
We're going into closed session?
No, I'd like to make a motion, because the closed session was suggested by George in his report. I'd like to make a motion that the closed session be open to the public for transparency.
I, I think that motion is illegal.
Ask the question for Dustin right now, but I think Dustin's answering that question.
Yeah.
Yeah, the employee can request that it be conducted in closed session. I think that's.
And we can't change.
That's my wish. Um, I left it open last time, cause we were in a complete discussion of a different contract world, et cetera. I'm, I'm requesting it and I want it in closed session now, because I don't want this to be part of, um.
Item H.
We're, I just don't want it out there, because we've got an election coming up and it shouldn't be there.
Now, with that said, I'll remind the board.
No money.
On the agenda this way, but you can evaluate performance, you cannot talk salary.
Right.
Gotta come out of open session. The other reminder is, before we go into sl- uh, closed session.
In the kitchen?
Larry, you better ask for public comments.
Oh, yes, on it. Cause anyone want to comment on us going into closed session to discuss a personnel matter?
Sure, I will. Uh, frankly, I am disappointed because last time it was an open session and I thought the public's participation and in hearing the board's comments was significant. And to do it in closed session this time, I think is cheating the public and the ratepayers.
But you realize that by law, we can't do a open session unless the employee allows us to, right?
Use the word transparency, and seven months ago, this came up, it was pretty open.
Okay.
But the employee has the right.
Different, that wasn't a pure performance evaluation. That was George making a proposed, proposed contract amendment. There's not a closed session item for that. So I just wanna make clear that, that is, it's a little different situation.
Okay, are you gonna, you gonna bring this into the?
Do you wanna talk about people's in and who?
Oh, yeah. Um, the board could have, uh, both of us go in. You could have one of us go in. You could knock both of us out. We could start out one way and end up, you ask us to leave.
It's both of us.
George and me.
What is the employee wish?
Personally, I think it would be good for both of you.
Except you, you may start with both of us in the room. You may ask us to leave at any time.
I think, I think it's hard to review the employee without the employee being there.
Right, a little hard.
There's no conversation about salary anyway.
Well, we're gonna review you without you being there.
I, I think the point is.
There's no reason not to have him in there.
If you want us to leave so you can talk freely and then I come back in and respond.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Then that's.
Right. Okay, well, we'll start with both of you in there.
I would agree. That's good.
Okay, we need a restroom break.
Okay, we're gonna take. Okay, we'll reconvene our closed session at nine thirty. You got five minutes.
I do, this is gonna be a long day.
I'm on two, so you're okay. I can do this. The announcement, we completed the evaluation by the directors and we are now out of closed session and back into open session. Okay. Open, consider compensation adjustments to the general managers, to the general manager. Okay. Okay. Do you have any comments, Bill?
Uh, compensation summary, is that actually the total compensation you receive on January the first, a hundred and forty thousand, two seventy-five? Does that count retirement and other benefits? No, it counts salary plus merit. This stuff says on the. How about a total with the benefits?
That's not what we're, that's not actually what we're negotiating here, are we?
It's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
With salary and benefits.
Hundred and seventy-nine thousand, thirty-six, twenty-eighteen.
Oh, you got.
Where'd you get that?
Huh?
Where'd you get that?
Yeah, you gotta get more than that.
Paper here for Kevin, last, a couple weeks ago, whatever. He added, you added this out at a meeting.
Really?
That was twenty.
You got health insurance, vacation, retirement.
Yes, what do you wanna know?
You get, you get a truck.
That's in there.
That must be worth about two hundred and fifty thousand a year, George.
The truck.
That's, that's gonna be pretty close.
Two fifty?
You had that one, one eighty.
About a hundred eighty. That includes, I think, George, your.
Includes, uh, that includes salary, health insurance, um, retirement.
Our total, the total cost of the district. It's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Payroll taxes.
I think that, I don't know if that was upgraded.
Vacation?
I thi- it must have been upgraded on one, one, forty-fourteen.
I guess the holiday and vacation is all in the salary.
Two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, May sixth of this year.
Okay.
You, Kevin handed that out.
Okay, so what, any other comments, Bill?
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
I appreciate that. I'll make comments later on.
You don't want him?
Well, I'll make some comments later on.
Later on, okay.
From the other directors.
Okay. Doug?
Yeah, I've been giving this quite a bit of thought, uh, and punching some figures in. That's why I have this one here. And I'm also looking at it on other employees because of the fact that, and I'm after everybody making a very fair salary. You know, I've always, and I've been very blessed to be in that category myself. Uh, the next one in line there, and I used the same drug, jargon last year, would be Kevin, and he's at a hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and seven with his total thing. And then moving back, George, uh, I noticed through here, almost everybody except one, one person has nine and they apparently don't participate in the utility worker. But on your pension fund, whatever you wanna call it, you have a fifteen point five percent that we apparently are paying. Everybody else is twelve. How come we're paying three point five more on you?
Contract.
Cause in my contract, that was actually offered to me in my first contract when, uh, the district was recruiting me.
Good. Yeah, then that was, that was brings you up to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Uh, while I'm rattling out here, George, I might as well. Now, and I know that I was the one that moved for this last year on your dealy bob when we finally got down to the nitty gritty. You, you agreed with SSI COLA.
Correct.
Which turned out to be.
No, SSI.
Well, what is it?
Social Security.
Yeah, Social Security.
Okay, SSI is.
It is SSI.
I?
SSI, Social Security index.
Social Security, yeah, oh, okay, SSI, okay.
Yeah, with the COLA.
Yeah.
Which is very good, and everybody that I ran into bought into that, okay? And it was one point five. We had no idea what it would be. But the question I'm building up to, uh, you were making in three eleven, one thirteen, you, uh, you were making a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred. In January, did you receive a one point five cash for that year thirteen?
No, no, my salary increased one point five percent.
I got that down, that increased one point.
On January first.
So, so you've got the, okay.
The overall salary broken over twelve months.
Let me finish here. And, uh, that's a question. Okay, so you got, you, you have a two thousand seventy-three, thereabouts, dollar raise with that one point five for this year. So you have got a raise for this year, which amounts to the hundred and seventy-nine thousand, which I think includes that one point five raise. You're making fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. That's your total, what it costs the district, uh, per month. And you actually have in pocket before taxes, I guess, or after, before taxes, eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine, fifty-eight. So the bottom line is, I think you're making a very, a very good salary. And what I've been trying to get for the district to do, and I haven't got the first base for whatever, we need to find out on all of our employees where they top out. You see, where they top out. So like, I know we have a ten month, a ten year, we hire a person in.
Ten years. Ten steps.
Ten, ten years?
Steps.
Ten steps.
So we hire in a utility worker one on the bottom of the ten.
Ten steps.
Ten step. I have not seen the top step. Maybe I just haven't looked or been told or whatever it is.
They're there.
It's there.
They're there.
There's about four percent a year or three percent, whatever it is. So, you know, we really need to get that, but I know for you, George, we do not have a top step.
Yes, we do.
Do we?
We don't have a, a wage range for George.
No, okay.
I, I tried to get it put in last time, but you guys wouldn't do it.
We don't have a, a top range for Kevin either.
I'm at the top of my range.
You are?
Yeah.
As a CFO?
Correct. I'm at the top of my range. Everybody except for George does not have the top, have a range. But technically, George is at the top unless you guys want to.
Okay, so George is at the top.
Plus a COLA.
He never had one.
But when I first, when I first started.
Yeah, exactly.
When I first started negotiating, the common way to do it, not here, other places, which was back up two years ago. Say if you were making thirty dollars an hour, you got your, at the end of the year, you got whatever COLA they were gonna pay it, but you still stayed at twenty bucks. But that's all shades and we can thank the unions for that, which I am a member of, I might add. Now, I know at Butte, if they have a COLA, every pay scale, every pay rate, they recalculate.
Correct.
That's what we do.
And so that's what we're doing here.
That's what we do for, for everybody, everybody else.
Right, yeah.
Except George is not part of that. I'm not part of that anymore. I used to be part of that. But every management position.
Yeah, but if you get, if, if you get a COLA, that'll go onto your salary.
That's correct. And every, every management has a range, and you have a copy of that, if you have the MOU, which I knew you have. Every management has a range and every union person has a range. I have a range, um, have a range. Um, and so there's only one person that doesn't have a range, and that's George.
Okay, well, see what I would like, I guess I could figure it out, but I just haven't taken time to do it. I'd like to know when everybody tops out at the end of that ten, you know, and then unless we decide, unless we were generous or whatever it is, well, then, what they would get is a COLA, so let's say they're ten, ten year, okay, top of their range. Well, then, for this year, they would get the COLA.
Yes, and if you need help figuring that out, just come in this evening. We'll walk through it.
Because right now, what I think most of our employees expect are a three to four percent raise. With COLA at one point five, I really think that most of them are expecting a three to four minimum.
But then, let's not discuss that now.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. We're way off, we're way off where we need to be. Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, Sepp?
Um, I believe that, um, George has done an outstanding job this previous year, but I am going to share in Director Fleischer's feelings that, um, I wanna remain unchanged for this year. If someone can come up with a one-time performance bonus that they would like to award, um, I would be willing to entertain that idea.
Ken?
I'm gonna not make any comments.
Not at all?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Maybe after I hear what poison Bill has to spew out, I'll bring up something.
Everyone wants to be last?
No, I'll be next.
You've already been.
Well, okay, well then.
Yeah, you've already been.
Give him, give him another turn.
Give him another turn.
Go ahead. Oh, Bill has, that's right.
You wanna say anything now, Bill?
I'll wait till the other directors have moved you, then I'll talk again.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm, as president, I'm gonna be last, so I get to set that rule.
Yes, you do.
Right, that's one rule I can set. Okay, so Bill, you wanna make any comments?
I will after you're through.
I'm not gonna allow any after mine.
Make my comments afterwards. You can't do that.
Can't the president set, set as a rule? I don't know, legal?
Are you gonna?
Apparently not on this board.
You can have a motion or?
Oh.
We, we don't have any motion on the, on the board side.
Yeah, it's not, not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. Okay, um. I don't know why they're putting everything on me. I'm the sick guy. Okay, um. I've told this, I've told this to everybody that talks to me about George. Some people think he's the greatest and some think he's getting too much pay and I'm shocked at people who, who think that if, cause they don't understand his responsibilities and how much money he has saved the district. How many years have you been here, George?
It'll be ten years, September first.
Right. I, I've been in town for thirty years and I don't recall any manager of PID doing anything to save the district money as hard as George has done. I, how much are we saving on utilities because of the bypass?
About a hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, so he's almost saving, he's saving over half his salary by just that one thing. And I've heard that that bypass was talked about many times, but everyone thought it was a, was a bad thing. And really, when you really analyze it, it's, it really made our water district, our water system so much safer. And you wonder, you know, here, we've been in a hundred years and here it takes George to come in and make a change that is so valuable to the district. And I've seen him do a lot of other things that have saved the district money, and that's why I don't think we could pay him too much. We could pay him to more than we can afford. Well, I don't wanna pay him more than we can afford, but I don't think we could ever pay him too much. So what we gotta decide is what we can afford. That's my feeling.
I'll make a comment.
Set and Doug, as far as it's sounding, it stays the same.
Okay. That's your comment, you two?
I would, I would make a comment that in, in, uh, looks like on this chart, three years ago in two thousand and eleven, George was making a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars a year. After three years, we've rewarded him with an increase of a whopping three point nine percent. And he is sitting here at a hundred forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That averaged one point three percent a year. Doesn't sound extravagant to me. Doesn't sound extravagant to me. I propose we give George a merit increase and increase his salary by 3.0 percent.
Above the 1.5?
He's already got the 1.5.
Yeah, I know, he's always got, so you're talking about a four and a half percent increase? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what I would be talking about.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Okay, I wish we could afford it. Uh, you see, what, I don't know if the public knows it, but there for a while, we didn't give George any increases because of the economy. We weren't increasing the rates for three years, we didn't, George was the only one that didn't get an increase. Everyone else did. Uh, well, maybe there was one year that the employees didn't get an increase.
One year they didn't.
One year, but they had a five-year contract, and they had, what, they get 3% each year for five years? And that, and they've always gotten more than George.
Plus COLA.
Plus COLA, but, uh-
Excuse me, plus steps.
Plus steps, yeah, I was just saying. The thing, and the reason that George wanted to get even last year, and it was a big figure, and I understood why, the only bad thing was that it, unfortunately, I didn't wanna raise rates, but I'm realizing that our rates aren't that high. I've always felt they were very high, because I always thought, well, why should we pay that much money for rainwater? But now I've found out that it's not, we don't, the state won't let us give you rainwater. And so, and that's what costs so much. And, uh, now they're trying to take away your water, so I don't know what to do. Uh, if, if we don't have water to sell in December fifteenth, December 2015, what do we do? Yeah, it'd really be terrible, and it could, I'm hoping it won't happen. Uh, so, um, I'm glad we did get the 1.5 in so that he won't not get an increase every year. And, uh, I, I, last year, when we gave him the raise of 3,000, which was equal, really, didn't give him a raise because we had given him a $3,000 bonus the year before, so actually, he stayed the same that year. And, uh, and I was surprised that he accepted it. And I was waiting for him to reject it, and then I was gonna vote for something higher. But he, he accepted it, so he blew my plans out of the water. So, uh, but, uh, you know, like, we're between a rock and a hard place. We're reject, we're presenting, we're representing the, the customers, and we're trying to keep a good ship afloat. And it, I, I'm just worried that we might be cutting our own throats if we lose George. And there's always that possibility.
Well, that possibility is on the horizon in May of 2015 or 16, George?
16.
2016.
Yeah.
And, uh, you said something earlier, Larry, that would actually contradicted something you said even earlier. You were talking about all of the cost savings that we have from George, uh, that continues on an annual basis. You know, we, we had a list of all this stuff. I, I am so disappointed about this whole process because of all the research that we did, quantified it, qualified it, put down the numbers, uh, his engineering credentials that save us, whatever it was, on the low end, 24,000 dollars a year. The, uh, the Magalia raw water bypass, or whatever that's called, that saves us over 100,000 dollars a year. Uh, you take just those two things there, and you made a comment a moment ago that says, yeah, I just don't know how we're gonna pay for an increase for George if we wanted to do something.
Well, I didn't say that, I said, afford it.
Yeah, okay, that's what you said.
Afford it, I didn't say we couldn't pay for it, I said, we, I know how we're gonna pay for it if we do it.
Yeah, exactly.
And I said, we, the district right now can't afford it.
I think the district can afford it. And, uh, so that, that's my opinion, though, so I, you know, me, I don't, I'm not real bashful, I go ahead and give opinions even if they're not popular.
Well, like I told George at lunch today, I've been in paradise for thirty years, and it's, people don't realize how many poor people there are in paradise. And where you don't think two dollars a month is a lot of money, there are some people that do think that's a lot of money. And, uh, and then there's a lot of people who have good jobs and it isn't a lot of money. And, uh, some people will admit that they have very low water rates, and others will tell you it's outrageous. So you get all these different comments and everything, and that's, and the reason I contradict myself back and forth is because I wanna keep George, and I also, I also wanna do what's best for the customers, and it's, they sort of fight each other. That's my dilemma.
That's where we just have to take the bull by the horns and make the vote and do what we think is right.
Well, I'm open to any, uh-
I'm gonna make a motion, um, I'm gonna move approval to keep the general manager's salary at the same level that it is, and award a one-time performance bonus of 5,000 dollars effective July 1st, 2014.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, further, uh, the, okay, discussion from the public, since we've had the, we'll have more from the directors later.
I've got a few thoughts, obviously, but, um, I, I, I'd like, I'd like somewhere for somebody to publish why we hired George. Because he, the thing is, didn't, didn't we hire him with the expectation he'd save the district money? That he'd do a wonderful job? And, and we just, we, we give him the truck, and we expect him to push the brake when the light turns red, and you guys wanna reward him because he pushed the brake instead of just posted on through and crashed. We expect him to hit the brake in the truck when he comes to the red light. We expect him to try to save the district money, that's, that's part of his job title, gentlemen. And I, I, you know, I just, I, I, if he's saving, if he saves money by outside the scope of his job, then that's something to be rewarded for. And, but the thing is, when, when his job is to manage the, the district, his job is to save the ratepayers as much as he can, to make it efficient. He, he's been here ten years, we have no extra storage, so now we're looking at everybody cutting back, you're gonna have less money coming in. But yet, you're still gonna reward him more money, because you're just gonna go to the ratepayers and say, sorry, folks, we had to give everybody a raise. And, uh, oh, by the way, we threw an extra five grand in for George, 'cause maybe, maybe he might quit if we don't. And, and honest to God, uh, I, I don't wanna get this too personal, but I happen to know, Mr. Duncan, that you cut back some of your tax bills to some of your customers because hard times were on, and they were gonna go to somebody else, 'cause you were charging a little bit too much. You do that in the private sector, because there's other people they'll go to if you charge them too much. The public sector, we have no other place to go for water than right here, this is it. So if you, if you guys just throw away money willy-nilly, we still have to pay. If you guys borrow 20 million dollars and put in a statue of yourself out in the front yard, the ratepayers have to pick up the tab. Now, George is a good manager, as far as I know, I, I haven't dug into it personally, I like the guy, he's got a wonderful personality. So from my point of view, I, I think he's a nice guy, he seems to have a lot of education, I listen to you guys, I believe you guys. But I just wonder, when do we top out, when do we top out the, the guy that mows our lawn? Do we give him 5,000 dollars extra every year because he didn't cut down your wife's roses? Is that it? Wasn't the lawn mower guy supposed to miss the roses anyway? Was he, I mean, what would you do if he cut down the roses? What do you do? You see what I mean? You're, you're, it's, it's so ridiculous, it's just, honest to God, it baffles my mind how you give a person a reward for doing the job description you hire him for. If he, if he invented, if he invented a new, which he might do, he's a bright man. If he invented something that made the district a couple million dollars, hey, I say, let him share in the wealth, God bless him. But just doing your job title, and you wanna give him, and you wanna give him a bonus? I mean, does that happen on your job?
Absolutely.
Well, you're, you're the, but see, you're, but here's the deal, here's the deal, let me explain it to you, fell right into that, because here's why.
I don't think I fell into it.
You're in the private sector, you bid against other glass companies. If they pay you too much, what happens? They go to the other glass company. But we have no choice, if you pay everybody here too much money, we still gotta buy your water no matter what.
You can drill it well.
Since he mentioned my name, can I, can I have permission to?
You can talk freely.
Talk back, is it okay? First of all, I don't know where you got your information, that somebody said-
Well, I'm not liberty to tell you, but I, I can tell you, I could, I could show up in court with the proof, you need me to.
But anyway, I do, the only time I cut people's rates is because I'm doing less work for them. I don't cut somebody because, because they're gonna go with somebody else.
But you, you do admit that you got, you got competition from other tax guys, and you can't discharge whatever you want, and you can't just give your office guy a bonus because you feel like it, he's been there too long.
I, would I, well, I don't have, I don't have an office guy.
Well, it's not personal between you and me, anyway, I, I happen to think you're, you're an okay guy, and God bless you.
I don't cut my way, my fee because somebody threatens to go somewhere else.
Okay, but since, since when do we give a public employee a bonus or a raise for doing their job title? When do, when is that okay? When does that, when is that okay?
Well, my feelings are he's doing above and beyond, that's why.
If he does, he's, if, you don't, you don't expect him to excel, I certainly expect him to excel, he's a very bright guy, I expect him to save us money. Like I say, if he invents the wheel again, then I say that's the bonus time, but doing an excellent job at the job he's hired for him, that's what he's supposed to do? That's what he will do, he's, he's a man of his word, he'll do the best job he can do, and it'll probably be an excellent job, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, how do we reward a person for doing their job title? You know, and I know I'm done, thank you.
Right, I don't agree with you, but the, um, well, I'm just gonna make a comment that I think the things that George has done is above and beyond what other managers have done. That's, that's, that's why I am so sold on George.
We've never had a district manager that did the things he's doing, even though they had the same job description. You've never had a district manager for PID that did what George's done.
That means you should have fired him.
And, and he-
Should have fired the other ones?
Yes.
Yeah.
That would've been up to you guys.
That was the board, that was the other, they did fire some of the directors, but they never messed with, they never messed with the manager. Uh, okay, uh, there's a motion before, anybody else in the public wanna talk to about it? And any directors wish to have comments, further discussion on the motion?
I'll vote.
Okay, everyone understands the motion? Read it back just in case, please.
The motion is to keep the general manager's salary the current amount and award a one-time performance bonus of 5,000 dollars effective July 1st, 2014.
Okay, Doug says he has a comment.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of comments. One of them, uh, George is, the next person on the salary scale here, which happens to be Kevin, is 32,000 dollars away, which is quite a stack of chip money for anyone on here, but as I rated in here, George, you've done, I thought, a very good job in what you've been doing, okay, and agreeing with a lot of these people. But we have a whole staff that I've observed, observed just from the point of what they're doing, a couple of them are sitting right here, that are doing a great job. So I could not diligently vote you a bonus. But if we have the money, Chief Financial Officer, to do that, I'd like to give, divided by the number of employees that we have, and give them all a little bonus. Because I've seen all of them out here digging holes and whatever else the hell they're doing, that's their job description, but they're doing an awesome job. And also in the office here, you see, so, do we have that kind of money available?
Uh, I think, again, that's a negotiated item.
We're way off, way off topic.
No, no, it's not off topic at all, you're talking about giving employees a bonus.
We're talking about one person tonight.
No, 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 no.
I don't think we've ever given bonuses to the employees other than awards.
I would, I would like to reserve comment on that, because I do believe it's a negotiated item that is more inclined to a closed session.
And the agenda item, it relates to one person.
One person, yeah. Yeah, I don't think we can talk about that.
We can't talk about it.
Because of-
We can discuss in the office.
Right, you can discuss as well, okay. Okay, we'll have a roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
Yes.
Vice President Hatt?
No.
Fleischer?
No.
Director Calhoun?
No, I can't believe.
President Duncan?
Yes.
Hey, it fails three to two.
It wasn't enough, right?
Yeah, I know, I was gonna say you-
No, I, I still think it's wrong, I wanna try this track again, I, I think that we should give him a wage increase that affects his salary instead of a 5,000 dollar one-time hit. You look back at the track record, we're just getting further and further and further behind. You wanna do it like a rubber band, and then when the, when the, when it's imminent that we're gonna lose him, we're gonna try to snap it and move it up 25 or 30,000 dollars? You know, and, and we're gonna be sitting out here lamenting about the fact that we've lost the best general manager that we've ever had. I think that, you know, I'm, I'm always a proponent of increasing water rates in small increments to keep up with the cost of doing business, and not sticking our head in the sand and letting the, the pressure build up, build up, build up, and then wham, we have to hit the clients with a 10 or a 15 dollar a month increase. I just don't like that, I think it's, it's, it's lying to the, uh, to the public. We should, uh, tell the public what it costs to run this organization and get the rates that cover those costs and allows us to build up our reserves for the future things that we have to pay for and build. And that includes the general manager. Uh, so, you guys, whether it gets a second or not, I once again will make a proposal that, that we give him a, uh, 3.0 percent increase, that would move his salary to 144,483 dollars a year.
And you talked about a, in your first time through this, you said, and a, and a merit increase, or a merit bonus too, didn't you say, no, no bonus?
No, there wasn't one in the first time.
Oh, I thought you said something about-
So you want, so clarify the motion, effective July 1, you wanna give him a 3% increase?
A 3%.
And then in January, he's gonna get another one and a half?
He'll get COLA in January.
It's whatever. Yeah, no, it's not one and a half percent, it's whatever.
Or whatever they come up with.
Yeah. I'm gonna give you a second, just 'cause I wanna hear the vote on this.
Well, that's what I did with you, I wanted to hear the vote.
Oh, there we go.
I know, I thought, I thought Georgiana was gonna fall over.
Any, any discussion on this motion? Any public input? Okay, roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
No.
Director Hatt?
Yes.
Director Fleischer?
No.
Director Calhoun?
No.
President Duncan?
No.
It carries one to four.
Yeah, under Robert's rules of order.
Under Ken's rules.
We got a one-fifth vote on that one.
It's a certification, Robert's rules of order. It may be even dust until he reads the book.
Till he reads the book.
Okay, boys, so I wanna make a, something that we're gonna settle on.
I move that we maintain this, next year's salary of general manager barber at 140,275 dollars plus benefits. I had every intention of moving to reduce it down to a six-month severance package, but I'm not gonna do that, I'll just, that's my motion.
Well, you want, you can't change his contract.
You can't change it, what he's at.
You can't change his contract.
I gotta work on it, though.
So you're saying no change? Right, that's your motion, no change?
Basically, no change.
No change.
No change, and I'll second it.
And it's been seconded, okay, any further?
Seven, I'm sorry, it's seconded.
Bill? Okay, uh, any discussion by the directors?
I urge the directors, uh, to vote no.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
No.
Director Hatt?
No.
Director Fleischer?
Yes.
Director Calhoun?
Yes.
President Duncan?
Gosh, you guys are hard on me. Um, if I were to abstain, it would pass, huh, or would it? No, it wouldn't, or I don't, yeah, it would, wouldn't it?
Yes, and abstain is a yes vote.
A yes vote.
Yeah. The last time I abstained, you said it was a yes vote.
Yeah.
That's right.
It is.
It is.
Okay, I'm gonna vote no. Fail three to two.
No, that wasn't, is that what you wanted?
You wanted a yes, I think.
You wanted a yes on that.
He's up for election.
Hey, I might lose my job. Good luck to the next one.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to keep the, I move to, uh, keep the general manager's salary at the current rate and the same cola and award a one-time performance bonus of five thousand dollars effective Jan, July first, two thousand fourteen.
That's the same motion?
I'll second it.
That's the same motion again?
Basically.
Did it sound the same to you?
Yeah, it did.
Kind of worded it the same.
I just wanted to make sure it was the same. I thought it was. I was clarifying. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
Yes.
Director Hunt?
Yes.
Director Fleischer?
No.
Director Calhoun?
No.
President Duncan?
Yes.
Passes three to.
That was fun.
Yeah.
So we got a five thousand dollar bonus.
Correct. Okay.
That will not attach.
Right, either that, the advantage for the public, the advantage of the bonus is it doesn't go on to next year and it doesn't get benefits, right? It doesn't get benefits, does it?
Correct.
Right, okay.
So although it might not be apparent why we do that, the logistics of it actually work out to a much better status than giving him a raise.
And yet, we're showing our appreciation.
Can't explain that during the middle of it, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. You did an excellent job.
Okay, committee reports. Water Conservation Committee. My first. Fleischer is the chairperson.
As you were aware, maybe you weren't aware of it, we had a water conservation workshop for residential users planned for tomorrow and working with George, uh, we had nine people sign up at the morning session and three in the afternoon. We opt to cancel, we're postponing, we're not canceling, we're postponing it. And, uh, I think it was a wise move. I personally went and talked to some of the presenters. Jerry Bended one and the people down at Ace Hardware were putting together a display and working with Michael Speis. And then I stopped by the garden shop, they weren't gonna participate, but just to let them know what was going on. And then, uh, we did that. Now, what Ward would like to do.
Did you say Barry was not gonna participate? Barry decided not to participate?
He couldn't do it, no.
Okay.
So George had a person lined up from his garden thing.
Ward?
But they.
Ward did?
No, no, George.
Oh, George did. Oh, you had talked to somebody, okay.
Over on the, the weekend thing, you know.
Good, good, good.
And Ward was gonna be doing the presentation on composting. And what Ward would like to do, that you heard him say it in public comments, he would like to see if we could put something together online. It's basically an online education class. Now, I've done some of those in the past. I don't know if it would, I, I don't know. It would be, it'd be on our website. But George, maybe you know I can talk about it and set. Let's get the three of us at a different time.
Okay.
And, uh, 'cause we don't have a committee meeting until the seventh of August. I remember that 'cause it's my birthday. But anyway, so maybe sometime this next week, we can get our heads together, Sepp, you, George and I. How does that sound? George, does that sound good?
Well, maybe it'd be two weeks 'cause I'm on vacation, so.
We'll, we'll get together.
Yeah, we'll figure, yeah. Send me some dates, send me some dates and see what I can do.
And, uh, I'm sure Michael would, would, I think, yeah, we, we might be able to put something together.
Yeah.
And we can have just a little informal type of a formal presentation. Okay, good. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, committee, Community Relations Committee, Chairperson Hunt.
We met a couple of weeks ago. Uh, one of the things that we asked to be brought forward was the, uh, Cedar Creek invoice uh, that, that they were gonna be presenting to us with, uh, this way we could see where we're spending money and what kind of topics and how much money we're spending. You know, we've approved so much money for them to, uh, to work for us and, uh, we got a, a great description. I really appreciated getting that, Tanya. Um, our agenda took us through largely, uh, you know, we were there most of the, uh, meeting was in regard to the, uh, the responses for the, uh, the drought and with the type of product that the committee.
Thanks, Lauren.
That they're coming up by, based upon, uh, requests from the Water Conservation Committee and, and so on and so forth. It's really top quality, uh, items and, um, to not, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna get into all the, all of the details of that. We talked about the Paradise Ice Rink, um, you know, in, in consideration of sponsorships and various things like that, uh, which is, of course, where we, what we voted on earlier, we recommended the four hundred dollar sign. They brought up the fact that, uh, they had some nineteen fifty-five minutes of a meeting or an article or someplace in a, in a publication that, uh, where there was discussion about public relations and the Paradise Irrigation District. I, I leaned heavily on them to tell them that they said public relations back then, and I can understand that, and instead of the community relations. But I, I was, I was overwhelmed once again and not, not able to move us back into the PR committee. Tanya, I would actually like for you to, uh, highlight any of the topics that you think might be, um, germane for the remaining directors of, uh, of what we did and we've spent a lot of money and shoot, we're, they're gonna be unemployed in a while.
Right now, we're doing a lot of drought issues, as you guys might imagine. The really good benefit of this is George had, um, really cultivated a great relationship with John Gilserian with the, um, Office of Emergency Services at Butte County. And through that relationship, they said that they would spend up to five thousand dollars of their money if, as a fifty percent match for drought messaging materials, which means that, um, the district is going to be able to really stretch its budget a lot further than it might have been able to otherwise. Those materials have, um, been approved and some of them are finished, some of them are not. And, um, if you've been to the lobby out in the front, you've seen part of what we call the traveling conservation kiosk. The conservation kiosk is something that because there's no real community center in Paradise, it will travel to different locations and it will have, um,
Like business locations?
Wrapped business cart, business locations such as banks or even the, um, Youth for Change where parents are coming in and going out and such. Um, different locations, rec districts, senior center, et cetera. And it'll have the four by nines. It'll have the four by nine cards that have eight different topics for conservation. Those are all being fifty percent funded as well as those little, um, the Conservation Committee has purchased yellow, um, what do you call them, rain gauges and water gauges? So that people can actually.
Sprinkler gauge.
Sprinkler gauges, thank you, Sepp, so that people can actually, um, monitor how much water their lawn is getting. So there are a number of those products that are in production or already finished. You'll find a lot of them already out over in the, in the front lobby, um, and that's.
Is a sprinkler gauge here?
No.
Not yet?
The design was approved. I know Mickey was working on the design, so those will be coming twenty-five hundred, as I recall.
I think so.
Twenty-five was the price break, yeah.
Okay, so twenty-five hundred of those are coming as well as the other items that are out there. Um, there's a lot of public outreach. We're hoping that people will be able to access those through various ways. All this stuff will be also provided on the website. We pushed heavily for Aqua Hawk in this last month. George has done presentations at the Waterwise gardening thing, as you heard, as well as at Normac. And was there some other place you took that show? No.
Taking it Friday.
Taking it Friday.
Kind of, taking it Friday.
Did you, were, did you wanna discuss that in your part or, okay. And, um, we developed a video in conjunction with, with Mickey on how to use Aqua Hawk and that's being featured on YouTube. So that's where a lot of the focus went. Um, again, it's about messaging, it's about conservation right now, but we also were talking about the district overall, corporation yard, et cetera. Yes, Doug?
I didn't see you behind the podium when I was talking about it. It's all right with George, maybe, Tanya, you can meet with us to talk about this online
Mm-hmm.
workshop if we wanna put it on.
Sure.
That'd be great. So either George or I'll get in touch with you when we wanna put, when we're getting it.
That sounds real quiet.
And this is, Trevor, this is pretty cool, that, uh, video that, that Tanya and Mickey put together is actually gonna be used by Aqua Hawk. They're gonna use it for their.
I was about that, I.
They've asked.
They've asked to, so the company we're buying that software from, they liked their thing so much that they wanna use it
They, they sent a.
As their little promo on their site.
Correctly to us, stating how impressed they were.
Sepp, if you, if you had, if you had the opportunity to look at it?
I noticed.
It's well done.
Can we get a discount from them?
That's what everybody wanted.
Yeah, I know, that was, I know, really, Aqua Hawk for, Aqua Hawk for a year, right?
But again, again, that was Mickey did a great job. Staff has done a wonderful job. It's, it's really.
That's very impressive.
Work with a district that is putting out that kind of messaging for our people. Aqua Hawk, I think, I heard somebody say at one of the committee meetings, I think it was a conservation, Aqua Hawk is awesome because it shows that the board, when the board voted to have the automated metering, we had no idea at that point that that would enable us. And without that automated metering, we could not do Aqua Hawk. And that Aqua Hawk is gonna help people keep an eye on their usage and, and be more water-wise about what they're doing, regardless if we're gonna be doing the voluntary twenty percent cutback or if the state comes after us with that, uh, further needs that we have for it. But people are responding well. We're sending out a press release, um, this week in regards to numbers comparing this April and May and last year's April and May. And even though the weather was quite hot, um, we still had, we still had a reduction this year. And I think George is probably gonna express that during his manager's report. So, any other questions about CR? CR?
We, we use that.
Community relations.
I don't really.
We use that Aqua Hawk.
Community relations.
Being KR, Ken Relations.
Couple of those people that really talk a bit.
I might need someone.
Okay, since Ken's up there, I'm gonna give him a next one, which isn't on our list, Buick County Special Districts Association meeting, which we had yesterday.
Yeah. It's pretty, pretty short. We, we met. We took roll call. We said the pledge. We voted on accepting old minutes and stuff like this. Uh, there was no real business to be done except for firing a couple of, uh, non-paying members and, uh.
Firing?
Yeah, no, I tried to fire them.
You didn't, I got a delay.
Yes.
I got a delay.
Softy over here, it's, it's a twenty-five dollar fee, okay? If they don't pay the bill, I say, go away. But anyhow, it, uh, we had a very nice presentation by Mike Trinka about the success of the, of the ice rink up here. Uh, some of the troubles he's looking at and how he's gonna continue operating with the, uh, minimum wage increases that are going into effect because it affects his agency much more than it affects ours. It doesn't affect ours.
Yeah, it could.
Directly.
We were saying it could. George, we were talking about it, it could affect us.
But, uh, he has a, a lot of problems there because they've got a lot of, you know, part-time kid employees that do a lot of stuff during the summer. Keep the scorekeepers at ballgames and things like this, you know, maybe you wouldn't think that are on the payroll, that they are. But anyhow, he gave a very nice presentation and told us what he's gonna be doing for this year. Says he's gonna do it at the same rate level. I encourage him to raise the rates, uh, because, you know, he's, he said, well, I'd like to get in three years and then, you know, we'll see where we are and then we'll raise them. I said, you're gonna hurt yourself. Raise them now, little bit at a time. Make sure you, you didn't cover it. You lost money last year. Okay, so go forward. But that's me, uh, as, as I tell people, I think we oughta just raise them a little bit so they don't all of a sudden say, whoa, what happened? Foolish, in my opinion. The other thing is, uh, we are going to be hosting the, uh, the meeting or the general, the general meeting in December. Is that right?
Executive meeting.
Executive meeting, yeah.
The, yeah, not the general meeting, executive meeting. Is it in December, the executive meeting?
Mm-hmm. In Octo, when is?
No, the, uh, the general meeting is in October. That's right.
And it's gonna be at a restaurant.
Uh, it's going to be at a restaurant that serves, uh, uh, food, hopefully good food. And it's gonna be at a night function. We're, we're struggling with trying to get membership to come out for that. And, uh, quite frankly, I think that, uh, you know, they, they've tried it on weekends and then they saw the, the membership waning. Uh, then they tried it on, uh, we, we've tried it for a year, a year and a half on weekdays, uh, for the general membership to come out. We, in fact, we held one last year up at the lake.
And they had good attendance.
Had, had good attendance. The others haven't. In fact, the last one was canceled, I believe, in, uh, in May. And, uh, quite frankly, I, Buick County Special Districts Association might have to take a hard look at itself and decide whether they're meeting the needs. Uh, if there's any, any productivity that's coming out of that group or whether it should disband and maybe wait for another political climate when everybody is hurting so much and needing help to band together that they need to get together for a political cause to make it worthwhile. But anyhow, the, uh, that's, that's it. We, our next meeting is in September, uh, September sixteenth. Then we have, that's the executive meeting. Then we have the, uh, general meeting in October, which will be a nighttime function probably at the Depot Restaurant in Oroville or something like that. And then we have our December executive meeting here, probably in our boardroom, I would, I would guess. And that's it.
Right. Okay, um, next one is a Buick, Buick, uh, local agency, which is mine. Um, I'll give you two of them. They were basically the, I did, I didn't report on the one because I was. Well, didn't I? I guess I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting, so I couldn't report. But anyway, I went, uh, both of them, one was in May and one was in, uh, in June. And basically, we're doing the same thing. We're still fighting with Chico on getting them to get over into the, conform with state law. And they're coming around and I was worried that when their manager left that it would start stopping then, but it looks like they're going, going ahead. They're just stretching it out and hopefully, uh, uh, they're gonna pay us some back money they owe us and then that'll, we've had to go into our reserves, so that'll punch up our reserves a little bit. And, uh, we did, uh, most of our business is with Chico, but Oroville now is getting on board about these duck communities, other words, disadvantaged communities that, that aren't in the city limits and Oroville's beginning to work on that too. Luckily, Paradise, I think we're all ducks. I think the whole town is ducks. I think we would qualify. But anyway, but, but we are in the city limit, town limit, so we're okay. And that's my report on, uh, LAFCO. And now the next one is the Finance Committee and that was just the other day. Uh, we were given the budgets and we, uh, I didn't have mine until, till that meeting because I was gone. But, uh, Ken had a lot of suggestions and everything and it was mainly the, uh, it wasn't the narrative, it was the other thing, the format.
Format.
And, uh, did we have any other decisions?
The finance payout. You went over that, but you already made a decision on it.
The what?
The finance.
That, that loan payoff?
Oh, the low, oh, yeah, with, which we recommended today and which was passed, yeah, that, the payoff one. That was gotten brought before us. Okay, that's all I.
You had a presentation from Dan Bay.
Oh, yeah, gosh, I'm really forgetting. Yeah, Dan Bay, our investment counselor.
Wow.
Had a presentation.
He got something to report there.
Boy, yeah. And, um, he says that because of the lack of activity in our account that he feels obligated to reduce his fee by fifty percent.
She will hear.
And it was very refreshing and we almost voted against it. Well, we didn't, we didn't vote. But anyway, he's got, I guess.
To reduce his fee by fifty percent, but you don't get invited to the barbecues he has every year, so.
Well, he's, and, you know, it's really refreshing, though, to find a business person do that.
And, you know, he, he said that, there's just not that many opportunities that, that come up with, within our restrictions of where he can invest the money. And the way that the markets are now, he says, so if we're not doing the work, I don't feel good about taking the money from you. When we start doing the work again and opportunities present themselves and we're spending more time and effort in managing your money, then I'll come back to you and tell you that we want our money back.
That should make the headline. So that was a plus, yeah.
Is that about five thousand dollars?
No, it's, uh.
It's more.
It's more, six.
Six, it was about eleven.
It was 12.
12,000.
It's 3,000 a quarter.
Well, I'm covered then.
3,000, yeah, we, we just, we just got the money and gave it to George.
And that's how we paid for it.
That's how, yeah, now you know how we paid for it, Bill. That's how we paid for George's bonus. Dan Bay revoked, reduced his thing, see? That'll help you and Doug to feel better. Okay.
Don't really feel bad.
Okay, good. I'm glad you don't feel bad. Okay, seven is general manager's report.
Okay, since it's a late hour, I'll go quick. You got my written report. On Friday, the county OES is having an event at the Kmart parking lot and, um, related to the drought, along with some other folks. And so we, um, we won't have a full booth there, but one of our meter readers is going to go up and be there to answer questions of the public and help them understand the, the conservation rules, et cetera. So we appreciate them, uh, coming up for that.
Where's that at, George?
Kmart parking lot.
Okay.
From 11 to 2. The conservation gardening event, uh, a couple of weekends ago went pretty well. It wasn't as ten, attended as well as they had hoped, but there was a lot of good interaction with people. Um, they really had some positive comments about, uh, our Aquahawk, like was reported earlier. And it was, it was a good, good couple of days. Uh, that you may have heard the town council adopted a fee, well, it was reported earlier on gray water, uh, systems. If you remember, I think I reported if, last year or so, I'd gone to a conference where they did a gray water discussion and when water rates are $2 a unit, it took about 16 years to pay back the, uh, savings they got from moving their gray water out. But that doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do. We have had a pretty positive response from our, uh, public on our 20% request for reductions in April. And we were, were assisted by some storms, but that's good because that means people are turning off their irrigation during storms. We were down 25.7% from consumption of 2013 of April. And in May, we were, uh, down 17.3%. So, bad for finance, good for conservation. Last thing I want to hit is that I heard a comment and everybody left about not, not constructing any storage. And I'll, I'll point you back to the drought presentation, uh, be, I think largely because of our, um, meters, new meter program and our leak detection. You know, we, we're about 1,200 to 1,500 acre feet, better than we would have been without those projects. Our conservation has paid off and that's as good as building storage, in my opinion. And I'll answer any questions.
I, I have one for you, George. Yesterday, when we were going down to the meeting, you asked me if I had anything else I needed to ask you about. And I did, but I didn't turn to this page. Uh, I was kind of wanting to know, did you, did, were you tired? Why did you use the same report from May for your report this month?
I changed the date.
I didn't change the.
Yeah, I saw that. What is this, May the 21st?
Different report, it's the same day.
That was what I was going to ask.
Copy and paste only works if you change the date, right?
At that meeting and maybe there was something to do, to do with it.
I'm not flawless.
First mistake this year. Okay, any other questions for the manager?
I did notice a typo.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the legal report.
Okay, very briefly, we've got two close session items further down on the agenda.
Night?
Yeah.
Oh, boy, that'll be short.
Yeah, that'll be short. Jam pipe update. Remember, the parent company settled. We have, that settlement was approved by the court. We're now on discussions on how to equitably divvy that up amongst all the various plaintiffs, including the ID. So we're working on that. And if you want to, want me to get into greater detail, we can schedule a closed session discussion on that for, uh, next month. It's still a little bit sensitive and the lead counsel is asking that we kind of treat it as sensitive. Uh, DataMatic bankruptcy, the, uh, trustee was successful in liquidating a portion of the estate. They sold the business to a nonprofit called Zinner.
Enjoy it.
Yes.
Zinner, uh, never heard of them. They have a website. We're kind of, uh, waiting to hear and see what impact, if any, hopefully there's not to the district.
From the operational standpoint, there's been no impact. Um, when they switched over, there was a couple of days where things lagged a little bit, but actually when they lagged a little bit, they performed probably how most automated metering systems perform. And so once things got rolling, it's, it's back to reporting as well as it has in the past. So it's been no issue so far.
Anything about the meters? Meter guarantee?
The ability to, the warranty's gone.
Yeah, the warranty's gone.
But when you purchase the Fireflies or whatever.
Yeah.
200.
We, we can, we still have found Fireflies to purchase and the trick is finding them that are American built.
Instead of China.
We're still hoping that'll kind of flush out over time, but we have not hit the, uh, meter a day rate that we kind of thought. It's, it's backed off and we're not replacing them at that type of rate, so, um, it's, it's been better.
Great.
That's all I have.
Okay, staff and billing reports. Does anyone have anything to ask questions about that?
I have, I have one here that was, I, I really enjoy the staff reports. It gives you a really, a good clear thumbnail description of what's been transpired. And down here, Delwater Company starts annual pumping.
What page?
It's already, okay, iPad 65. Is that, you know, we got 210 acre feet or something, didn't we, for them, put in from PGD?
Yeah, they, they deliver 265 plus or minus acre feet and they pay us to treat it.
Yeah, right. They pay us to treat it like $90,000 or something like. And is that, is that that one acre feet they're drawing out now?
Yeah, that, that's the water, yep.
$90,000? To treat?
That's the water, yeah.
But I heard the.
265.
$90,000.
That's what we annually pay.
Well, they, roughly, there's a, there's a contract with them and there's just a price that's set.
Nine, plus or minus 90,000.
Yeah.
Where that would be for treating 260 acre feet or whatever was passed out.
Correct.
And that came out of the, uh, Henry Canal.
Correct.
Did they just turn it out or did they put it through the powerhouse? Not that makes any difference.
It's turned out.
It's turned out, okay. Are they still using that little powerhouse in the city on the Duwensie property?
I believe so, yes.
I would think so, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the staff and billing. I'll make a motion to accept the staff and billing report as presented.
I'll say it. Okay, good.
He seconded it.
I seconded it, yeah.
Doug seconded it. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Who actually writes that report, George?
Trey, it was Jim Passanese.
Yep. Boy, can I, yeah, Jim is an excellent.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Pass this 5-0. Okay, uh, what do we got? We recessed, we already did that. Treasurer's report.
All right, so you have my written report. Um, I want to reinforce Aquahawk. How the feedback inside of the office of what we've heard about Aquahawk has been nothing but spectacular. Every person that comes in raves about it. I think it's the culmination of a long-term project that has really driven the information to the customer, customer to make, to empower the customer. Um, one thing is that we're in the process of, uh, putting up two monitors in the office with, um, their little, um, computers that only allow certain access to websites to allow customers to come in if they don't have computers, to be able to check their Aquahawk account, sign up for Aquahawk. Um, and it's also going to give us the ability to put whatever information we want on that monitor, why it's not being used. So it'll be kind of like a reader board inside the office. And that's the.
Does it show them how to do, work the system?
It'll show, it will have people there available to help them sign up. And once they learn how to sign up and sign in, I think it's fairly intuitive, uh, on how to do it, so.
Okay.
Um, but I think it's been just a, a great, a great tool for our customers. One thing is that we did pay off the 2011 refinance. If you remember, we refinanced the 2001 bonds three years ago. Our final payment on that was this month, so that debt has been retired. So we no longer have that debt.
Finally paid for the first filtration plant.
That's right, exactly. As of, as of last month.
That's the one that was built in 83.
Correct, yeah, the old one. Yep, that's fin- finally, uh, has been paid off.
That was the $1,799?
That, that's the total annual debt service payments that we made. That includes 520 some thousand dollars that was, uh, paid on that final debt payment. From an operational standpoint, it's hard to tell where we're going to end up at the end of the year because our last couple of months are big months for revenue based on consumption. And as the trends are showing that our consumption will be down from last year. So just due to the fact of conservation, the, the, uh, consumption fee could be slightly down from where we had budgeted, uh, last year. So, right now, the budget's in process. We're waiting, we're, we're waiting until July to bring the budget out for, uh, for review for the board. Just so that we have good actual numbers, uh, to show the board of what we did last year and what we kind of are looking forward into the future. Some of my things that I'm working on currently is that we have, um, we have bond counsel, uh, looking at our, um, loan documents with the state of California for that $500,000, um, debt service that will be coming to the board for the design of the B reservoir. The reason why is the state wants parity with the reservoir debt. Meaning they want first right to our revenues, just like everybody else has first right to our revenues. Um, that is something that we need to protect ourselves from, from, not only from the state, but from our other debt holders out there to make sure that we're in compliance with all debt holders out there. So I have a conference call with bond counsel on Friday to go over that and they'll be reviewing that and reviewing a resolution that will come to the board in the next board meeting to approve that debt, debt financing, which again is at $500,000 at 0%. Uh, I attended the GFOA conference in, which is the Government Finance Officers Association in Minneapolis, May 17th through the 22nd. Total cost was 24, 2,459.56. Um, great conference like it is every year. Uh, some of the, the areas that I focused on was, um, a capital improvement plan, which was right up our alley. I got a lot of good, uh, resources from that. Actually emailing other, uh, finance officers for templates they use for their own conference, or for their own capital improvement plans. So me and George are con, are going to be working on that throughout the next year and hopefully by next budget year, we'll have a full capital improvement plan for you guys. Uh, I went and looked at healthcare reform and it was funny because the first slide said it's a, the first slide was, oh, I can't remember, but it was basically HSA. It was, everything was being pushed to HSA, HSA, HSA. And it was, uh, wellness program, that's what they call it, wellness program, meaning getting your people to be invested into their own healthcare. And then I also went to a, um, retirement plan, uh, update basically about what the new retirement plans are out there, what people are doing within the states, how they're handling, uh, the downturn in the investments being that they're not getting the returns they're looking for and what kind of things are going on with that. So just to kind of give us an idea of what's out there, what's available, what other people are doing. And it's just, those are the highlights. I went to many other classes, but those were the main highlights that I hit. And so I felt like it was well worth, uh, the time and effort to go out there and, uh, well worth the money spent, so. This time I, answer any questions?
Any questions, Seth?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Uh, thank you very much for your travel report and how much money you spent. We don't get those all the time and I appreciate that.
Not a problem.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Me.
One?
I don't think we're supposed to approve it. I think we're supposed to accept it. It's not an audited, an audited item.
Well, some action might be taken, maybe taken. I took some action. I made some action on it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a.
Be so sharp at 11:50.
I know.
Okay, I move we approve the, uh, general fund checks.
Want me to help you with?
Yeah, help me read it.
Yeah, let me, let me do it because that's, that's a lot of stuff for your eyes to deal with here. I move we approve general fund check numbers 46370 through 46487 for the month of May 2014 totaling $360,919.47. Exclusive avoided check numbers 46385, 46386, 46398 and 46412. And authorization of a similar amount allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of June.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Anyone want to talk about any checks? Bill?
No, there was too much other stuff going on. I didn't even look at the.
Okay, Doug? Uh, Seth?
I got three things, but they were all just to point out that, to the public, but the public's probably not interested in what I picked out, so I'm not going to worry about it.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, I'll ask questions. It's probab, I, I think I know what the answer is, but it's on iPad, page 99. The vendor is Utility Services Associates. It says water line survey and pinpoint, is that a leak detection?
It's our leak detection, yes.
Okay, and did the name of the company change? Or am I just forgetting who they were? Same people we've used before?
Yes.
Okay.
You're forgetting.
USA.
But don't we charge, is this like a partial payment or something?
Yeah, that's, they, they did a, uh, they did a progress payment. The total cost was about 20,000?
I think so.
Okay.
It's a progress payment.
All right.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it?
Yeah, because they weren't interested.
I have one, um, and I asked about it. It's the payment to, uh, on the unemployment on, uh, page 92. And I just wanted to, uh, I, my question is, how, how do you budget for this?
How do I budget in there? Uh, I put a, a lump sum for unemployment, uh, that I feel is going to be in there.
Based on last year?
And I forget what, I don't know the amount, but I just, I, yeah, based on prior year.
Okay, that's the only question I have. All those in favor of approval of the checks, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Pass this 5-0. Okay, director's comments. Bill?
My usual. The leak, the amount of water we're losing is starting to run, start back up. The amount of pipe we put in the ground, unless we put some recently, is still zero for almost two years, replacing pipe. I saw a crew out the other day repatching asphalt. And then the courtyard isn't done yet. They're still painting, working on a gate, doing other things like, um, days, so the yard isn't finished. Anyway, that's it.
Okay. Doug?
Very interesting.
Ken? You're supposed to hide behind the bush if you can say that.
Did you call me?
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm such a, a shrinking violet. I don't really like to just speak out about things, so I, I just won't say anything at this time.
Okay, Seth?
I'm going to keep my comments for tonight.
I'm, okay, my comments is, uh, I really appreciate all the attention I got when I was sick and it, and the, all the contacts and everything. And I've got, bought the thank you cards to send out, but I just haven't had the energy to do it. They will be coming out and, uh, it was really appreciated. That's my.
Glad to have you back.
Yeah, tonight.
And, uh, in fact, where's your? I, I just didn't realize how much it helps to have people contact you and everything. And they, even people that I didn't know that well called me. It really helped.
Good. It really does, doesn't it?
Yeah, it really does, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, is the public want to speak about the closed session we're going into? Okay, is the public want to speak about the closed session we're going into? No? Have fun.
You don't want to stay up till we come out?
We're going into closed session for a conference with legal counsel. Concerned, considering- Oh, yeah, I'm walking. No. I just make sure I got, I get close to the wall in case I need it.